Good afternoon. If you are tuning in to today's opening of special city council close session, the close session has been cancelled, but please stay tuned for the special stadium authority meeting, which is to begin at 4:00 PM as noted. Thank you for tuning in.
Thank you for joining us today.
Are you ready for me?
Councilmember Davis.
Okay, so you're ready for me. As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with the strength, courage, and will to perform our obligations and duties to our people with justice to all.
Can't hear you, councilmember Davis.
You can't hear me?
I can hear her.
You yourself.
We can hear her.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay, sorry. Um, let us seek wisdom so that we may act in the best interest of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so that we may serve our community with fairness and respect your needs before all.
Uh, thank you. Please be seated. There we go. Okay, uh, roll call Assistant City Clerk.
Vice Chair Hardy.
Present.
Board Member O'Neil.
Present.
Board Member Davis.
Here.
Board Member Watanabe.
Here.
Board Member Shahal.
Present.
And Chair Gilmore.
Here.
May I read the announcement?
Yes, please.
AB twenty-three announcement, members of the Santa Clara Stadium Authority, Sports and Open Space Authority, and Housing Authority are entitled to receive thirty dollars for each attended meeting. Statement of behavioral standards, the city of Santa Clara has adopted a code of ethics and values and behavioral standards for public meetings to promote and maintain the highest levels of conduct. This includes mutual respect, robust discussion, and allowing city business to be done in an efficient and consistent manner. Please note that as the presiding officer, the mayor's direction in matters of process and decorum should be followed, and that use of the gavel indicates all conversations must conclude, and everyone in attendance should come to order and attention. Welcome, and thank you for your participation.
Thank you very much. So, uh, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to today's City Council and Stadium Authority meeting. Uh, the city of Santa Clara continues to take unprecedented steps as we comply with the County of Santa Clara's Public Health Department order and guidance to prevent and slow the spread of COVID- nineteen, including the fol- following of social distancing protocol and the use of face coverings. For today's meeting, the city is implementing a Zoom feature to allow public participation from the safety of your own home. Members of the public can join via the link or call into the Zoom meeting, uh, displayed on the screen now. Hopefully, we can display that. If you would like to speak, uh, on an agenda item or during public presentations, please raise your hand on the Zoom application or press star nine on your phone. Please only raise your hand while the item you're seeking to speak on is being presented. Staff will either enter your name or the last four digits of your phone number, and I will call you to speak. As a friendly reminder, members of the public have two minutes to speak on an agenda item and three minutes on public presentations, and those are items that are not on the agenda. Prior to each agenda item, staff will, uh, lower each hand to ensure that members of the public are requesting to speak under the appropriate agenda item. You may also submit your comments on the e-comment feature available on the Santa Clara Legisstar page or via publiccomment@santaclaraca.gov, and the comments will be read into the record. In addition to social distancing, all of us in city government have been practicing frequent hand washing and environmental cleaning. We have implemented strict social distancing measures, oh, in the cafeteria as well. I need to cut that out because there's no public now, uh, in the cafeteria or physically in the council, uh, chambers. We're doing this via Zoom now. Um, I want to thank all Santa Clarans for your efforts in following the very serious steps we are taking as we shelter in place and only conduct essential activities that are critical for the safety and health of our community. So, uh, with that said, we're going to, um, move to continuances and exceptions. Do we have any continuances or exceptions from, uh, staff, council members, or the public?
Mayor?
Yes.
A COVID update was not on today's agenda, but considering the record-breaking surge of COVID-nineteen cases and hospitalizations and the new restrictions that were announced this past Saturday, I, um, have asked Lisa Shellenthal, the city's chief of emergency services officer, to provide an overview of the county's current response to COVID-nineteen and a situation update. Um, if, if it's the pleasure of the board, we're prepared to, um, just provide a verbal update if, if, um, I think it's a good idea, just considering our normal practice.
Thank you. Before we do that, are there any other, uh, exceptions or continuances? And the staff's gonna have to help me because I can't see all the hands that are raised, so if you wouldn't mind, um, jumping in if, if there is, uh, staff.
No continuances, and I agree to Lisa's update.
Okay.
I show the city attorney is, has raised his hand.
A city attorney?
Yes, um, I think, I think it'd be advisable to just vote to put, put their COVID report on the agenda.
Okay.
Under the Brown Act, that's allowed because it's something that arose within the last, um, twenty-four hours, the, the latest information, and I, I think it's acceptable to do. Council isn't gonna take action anyway, but I think it's just, uh, an advisable thing to do is just to vote to put that on the agenda.
Okay, do I have a motion to, um, add this to the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Davis in a second. I think that was Vice Mayor Hardy.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, City Clerk. Assistant City Clerk.
Come in. Okay, um, just a moment here. Vice Chair Hardy.
Yes.
Board Member O'Neil.
Yes.
Board Member Davis.
Yes.
Board Member Watanabe.
Yes.
Board Member Shahal.
Yes.
And Chair Gilmore.
Yes. Okay, so, that passes. Thank you. Um, uh, City Manager?
So Lisa, can, I know you're on the line, can you please provide a verbal update of all that's occurred since we've last updated the council?
Yes, thank you, City Manager Santana, and thank you Mayor Gilmore and all members of the council, uh, for your, um, support and dedication to our efforts in the city and the county with our COVID-nineteen response. The county reports the new restrictions, uh, that are imposed upon us effective yesterday. Our steps to sustain the capacity of our hospitals, uh, which are now being stretched, not only in the county, but, uh, throughout California. New cases result in new hospitalizations two to three weeks after infection. Today, the state determined Santa Clara County's adjusted COVID case rate is eleven cases per one hundred thousand of our population, which remains consistent with the Purple Tier One metric of greater than seven cases. You may recall on November seventeenth, the case rate was seven point six cases per one hundred thousand, so we've gone up to eleven relatively quickly. The state determined the county's adjusted test positivity rate is three point five percent. And a month ago, you may recall, it was one point seven percent. So cases and hospitalizations have sharply increased. As of today, the latest COVID case numbers reported by Santa Clara County reflect a cumulative total of thirty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven cases in the county, four hundred and eighty-two deaths, and sixteen hundred twenty-one cases in the city of Santa Clara. This includes three hundred and eighty-four new cases in the county and seventeen new cases in the city. On November seventeenth, I shared that we had more than three hundred new cases for five consecutive days, which was unprecedented at that time, and numbers have been trending up from there. This past Saturday, we had a record-breaking number of seven hundred and sixty new cases in the county, which was two hundred more cases than the previous record. Yesterday, we had eight hundred and one new cases. This is very meaningful because data indicates twelve percent of cases will require hospitalization two to three weeks after being infected. Hospitalizations have also been rising sharply. On November first, we had eighty-five COVID hospitalizations. Today, we have two hundred and eighty-eight. This is the greatest number of hospitalizations so far in the pandemic and exceeds our previous highest number by more than one hundred patients, which was a hundred and eighty-five patients on July twenty-ninth, when our hospitals were stretched. Our COVID ICU beds have more than tripled in the past month. On November first, we had twenty-five intensive care patients in our county's hospitals, and today we have eighty-one patients in intensive care units in the county. There is still available capacity in our hospitals, and all hospitals have surge plans to increase their capacity. However, Santa Clara County Health Officer Dr. Sarah Cody stated this past Saturday, the county estimated our hospitals in this county will exceed their capacity to care for all patients by the third week in December, if the current trends continue. And the governor stated today, this statement is true for all of California. You have heard me say that beds do not treat patients, healthcare workers treat patients. The county had the ability in the past to receive healthcare workers through the medical and health mutual aid system from areas less impacted in California. Now, most of the state and much of the country is impacted, and staffing shortages are expected, especially for intensive care units. The state is looking at various ways to address this. I'll summarize key changes to the mandatory directives that became effective yesterday. There are capacity limits for indoor facilities open to the public. Stores and other facilities open to the public will be limited to ten percent capacity indoors, so that's retail. Uh, grocery stores, drugstores, and pharmacies, however, will be allowed to operate at twenty-five percent capacity indoors. Gatherings continue to be allowed only outdoors with a maximum of one hundred people. The state limits such gatherings to First Amendment-protected activities, such as religious services or protests. All recrea- recreational and sports activities that involve physical contact or close proximity to persons outside one's household, including all contact sports, are temporarily prohibited. Card rooms are temporarily closed. The county stated indoor and outdoor card rooms are closed, but we submitted a question to the County Emergency Operations Center, seeking clarification about whether this applies to car-based bingo. We know that car-based activities are not considered gatherings, but since bingo falls under the requirements for card rooms that are not allowed, we just want to make sure we have due diligence with this issue. It impacts fundraising for several of our community-based organizations. Hotels and other lodging facilities will be open in the county only for essential travel and for use to facilitate isolation or quarantine. And there is a new requirement for quarantine post-travel. The county continues to strongly discourage leisure and nonessential travel, but the new mandatory directive on travel will require people to quarantine for fourteen days upon return to the county from travel of more than a hundred and fifty miles. Healthcare workers traveling into the county to provide care, or patients traveling into the county to obtain treatment, will be exempted from this requirement. And other exemptions are also stated in this directive, such as those for critical infrastructure workers. I will add that, in closing, that the governor said yesterday, he and the Department of Public Health are considering additional restrictions for counties in the purple tier, which could be a possible stay-at-home order similar to what was issued in March. Uh, we hope to hear more about that, uh, later this week. This concludes my update.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I know there, there might be some questions, or there has been a lot of questions out in the community in terms of, um, you know, the new orders and trying to really, um, evaluate the new orders. So are there any councilmembers that have any questions for Lisa on this? Um, Lisa, also, do you know when, when you're gonna get some information on the car bingo?
I do not, I do not know. Um, since I haven't received it yet today, I'm hoping I will get it tomorrow, although I will say that they do work into the evening in the county EOC, uh, as we all are also accustomed to doing.
Right.
So I do hope to hear soon, obviously.
Okay, I know there's some very anxious people out there. Uh, councilmember O'Neil, I believe you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so in relationship to like the First Amendment-type activities that you mentioned, Lisa, um, uh, does, so are all indoor activities either of a, like, First Amendment, like protest nature or religious nature, all of the indoor activities? nature, all of the indoor activities are now, once again, off limits?
That's correct.
It's only outside, so it's outside, but they can have up to 100 people outside? Is that what you said?
That's correct.
Because I, okay, because I had heard something about like a gathering of 10 people, or is that, was that like a gathering in your backyard or something? Because I have, it seems like I've also heard some discussion of gatherings of 10?
The only gatherings that are allowed are outdoor gatherings, and the state limits those to three households gathering outdoors only.
Okay, all right. But so all church or mosque or synagogue activities will have to be outside and with fewer than 100 people?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, are there any other councilmembers that would like to speak? Councilmember Watanabe?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the report, Lisa. I know how important this information is to be able to get to our residents and just to stay on top of. I watched a bit of the press conference on Saturday, and I saw where the county council talked about how people will be informed of the need to quarantine for two weeks if they've been out of the area, like beyond 150 miles, and they would be, like people would be contacted like through the airports or if they're taking trains, that there would be people in the stations or the airports to let them know about the requirements and the need to quarantine. I've had several people ask, "How will we enforce?" Like people that have been driving, for instance, we know with, even though we were told to stay home during, like over the Thanksgiving holiday, I know there are people that traveled and by car, and so what are we doing? Or have you heard of any kind of enforcement that's going to be put in place to just make sure that people that have been beyond that 150 miles quarantine?
You know, that's an excellent question. Thank you, Councilmember Watanabe. What we have heard so far is there is not capacity to enforce this restriction, and both the county and the governor have stated that they are counting on people to do the right thing.
Okay. Yep, that's what we hope they'll do.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to, oh, thank you very much. I'd like to add a clarifying statement to follow up on Councilmember O'Neill's question. And there's nuances here, and it's, there's just nuances here. So yes, outdoor gatherings are limited to worship services and protest activities with a maximum of 100 people, but I would be remiss if I did not also state that car-based activities are not considered gatherings, so that limit of 100 people does not apply to car-based activities. So I just wanted to be clear about that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Councilmember Watanabe?
No, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody, member of the public? I don't see any hands up. Okay, thank you very much, Lisa Schonthal, for that. And City Manager, did you have anything else you'd like to?
No, that was it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for that report. I think we should put it on the agenda for every meeting that we have this type of report so that the public is aware of what's happening, or at least our interpretation of it for the city of Santa Clara. So thank you for that. Next, we have public presentations. Do we have any members of the public? Assistant City Clerk, any public members?
I do not see any hands up for any public presentations.
Okay, all right, thank you. Moving on then, we have public hearing, general business. The first is action on the Santa Clara Stadium Authority Financial Status Report for quarter ending June 30th, 2020. Executive Director?
Good evening. This is a report that's going to be provided by Ken Lee, our treasurer. Ken?
Great, thank you, City Manager Santana, Madam Chair, Stadium Authority Board. Good evening. For the record, Ken Lee, Treasurer for the Stadium Authority. I have a short presentation before you regarding the first quarter report for fiscal year 2021, and this includes a short explanation of our methodology and limitations, summary of NFL and non-NFL events, summary of our operating budget expenses and revenue, status of our debt service, capital improvement program, and update to the financials based on COVID-19, and then a recommendation to note and file. Just for context in terms of methodology, this report or the information included in the report for NFL and non-NFL event statistics and financial information related to the stadium manager expenses are provided by ManCo. Some of the source documentation reviewed for non-NFL events, if there are any, in this case there aren't, we review those for greater than $25,000. For all other events, detailed review of financial information is not conducted. Later in this agenda, you'll hear from a firm that we contracted to review and evaluate non-NFL event information from prior years. So because of COVID-19 and the pandemic, there were no NFL games held in the first quarter. Two preseason games were scheduled to be held but were canceled due to the NFL decision based on the pandemic. The first game of the season was held during the quarter on September 13th, not in the first quarter, but without fans, and then on the non-NFL side, also no events occurred in the first quarter due to the pandemic. From an operating budget summary, total operating revenues of $6.3 million represented 9% of the budget. Some of that was under budget due to COVID-19, and I'll talk more about that financial impact later in the presentation. And then timing of some of the revenue receipts, SBL proceeds and naming rights in particular. On the expense side, expenses of $25.8 million occurred in the first quarter. This included GNA staff costs on the Stadium Authority side. I do want to mention, the board did not approve at least a portion of stadium manager expenses that were withheld. ManCo continues to draw on the revolving loan, so for the first quarter, $1.3 million, and to date, about $6.9 million. As far as SBLs, if there's a glimmer of good news with regards to Stadium Authority financials in the midst of a pandemic, is a lot of the SBLs continue to sell, and so here are some of the statistics around the value of the SBLs. 533.7 million or 91% of the sellable SBLs for specifically through the first quarter, 86% of the value was collected, and 133 new SBLs were sold during the quarter. On this slide, a summary of the discretionary fund, $2.3 million. This previously was used to pay for NFL public safety costs above the threshold, so this is one pot of money in terms of reserves, 2.3. I'll talk more about other reserves as we walk through the presentation. I want to spend a moment on debt, and so through the first quarter of 2020, the overall reduction in debt is over half for the first time, under $300 million in remaining debt. And there are three issues of debt that are still outstanding. Term A, which is the largest portion of that debt, as you can see in purple. Budgeted payments of $25.6 million are scheduled for the fiscal year and based on existing revenues. In the fund, that payment is going to be made. There's no risk there from a revenue standpoint. The CFD advance, so this is a pass-through from hotel proceeds. I know while there's a very little hotel activity, the requirement here is that any revenue from that CFD amount would get passed through. And then lastly, the third item here, the subloan that the Stadium Authority has with the 49ers, $5.6 million is scheduled. We are currently reviewing the use of a ledger credit, which are advanced payments from prior years, so whether we can take advantage of that credit and preserve cash in the fund so as to potentially not pay that if necessary. As far as capital projects are concerned, projects continue to be halted due to procurement and prevailing wage issues with the stadium manager. On the Stadium Authority side, several purchases have moved forward, and additional projects will be reported in the second quarter report. On this slide, this is a new slide for the fiscal report. We took a look at the major revenues that are impacted by having either no events or no attendees at the events, and so on the revenue side, in summary, $15.7 million or so is our projected impact from COVID-19, 8.7 roughly from the NFL ticket surcharge. This is the 10% on the NFL ticket. Net revenues from non-NFL events, we had a million and a half in the budget. Rent from very recently, just this past weekend, we received notice that two games that were scheduled for December 7th and December 13th would not be able to happen, and so potential loss here of almost $5 million from the two games. And then the ticket surcharge revenue on the non-NFL side, due to no attendees here, rounds out the breakdown of that 15.7. So we are looking at solutions and savings throughout the Stadium Authority because there are no attendees, there are savings of the SBL holder buffet of $1.2 million, discretionary fund expense we had budgeted of $250,000. Use of Statco tenant improvements, a small item there, $73,000 vacancy savings. We are holding positions vacant on the Stadium Authority side, so with those vacant positions and projected expenditures, about $1.2 million in savings. And then as far as stadium manager shared expense costs, we had budgeted those as legal contingency, so based on their guidance that they're targeting a 10% savings, that's $885,000. We continue to dialogue and ask them if there's further update to that. We have yet to receive a new number there. And then the last item there, I mentioned the ledger credit for the subloan of 5.6 and potential operating use of reserves, $12 million to help offset that shortfall. And so we are reviewing that ledger credit, and there is a balance in the reserve of 11.6 at the time. I wanted to touch on the rent payments because that was late-breaking over the weekend. Here's the schedule, the typical schedule that we receive rent or we had planned to receive rent for 2021 in the column there totaling $24.8 million. The rent we have received to date totals just shy of $17.9 million, and so we'll continue to monitor the two games. You know, we anticipate some of the payment, future payments here will be impacted as well. So just wanted to provide a summary of rent payments because of that late-breaking news. So with that, the recommendation is to note and file the Santa Clara Stadium Authority Financial Status Report for the quarter ending June 30th, 2020, and myself along with staff are available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ken. Let me go to the Authority Board to see if there is anyone that has questions. I'll start with Vice Chair Hardy.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Gilmore. If you could go back, I apologize, Ken, I just wanted to make certain I understood on the 11th slide, there under the subloan ledger credit, you mentioned about 12 million. It's listed there as 12 million, but you were talking about 11 million. That confused me. Could you help me, that comment?
Sure. So the balance of solutions based on a $15.7 million revenue impact here, you know, if you just doing the math, subtract those solutions up above, what's remaining is roughly $12.1 million of solutions, and so we're exploring a subloan ledger credit of potentially up to $5.6 million. And if we're successful with that credit after we do a review, then what's remaining would be, you know, the 12.1 minus 5.6, so roughly $6 to $7 million that we would have to tap from our operating reserve. Now, our operating reserve balance is currently 11.6, so we would, you know, tap potentially there a sizable portion of that, but the $12 million number there is really to show what's remaining of the solutions that would have to be covered either by reserves or through that ledger credit.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Thank you. Authority Member Shahal?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ken, for the report. Question is, looking at, like, we will be missing future, anticipated future rent payments right now, and you mentioned that we do have $25.6 million for our 2021 rent payments. So what is our total reserve like we have as of now? I see 17 over here, right? 17.88 already in the books, but we have to pay 25.6. So how are we managing that?
So these are revenues. So these are revenues to the Stadium Authority. So we've received 17.9 million out of the roughly $25 million in revenue. So on Slide 11, I show that the impact from the rent in terms of our revenue is about $5 million for the two games, and when you look at the solutions on this slide, we do have a handful of solutions, including potential either the ledger credit or operating reserve. Our operating reserve is currently 11.6 million, so you know, if we're successful with the ledger credit, you know, we would tap a portion of that. If we're not successful with the ledger credit, we would have to use the majority of our reserves. We would also, we are exploring other expenditure savings like our capital expenses and other line items, so this is kind of a higher-level review, but we are taking a look at deeper expenditures just to make sure that from both a reserve standpoint and to meet our debt payments, that we would have sufficient cash.
As just to follow up, because we could, getting to your question, Board Member Shahal, we could issue a summary of the status of reserves and their balances. For instance, the discretionary reserve is roughly about 2.3 million. As Ken was just stating, there is some fund balance in the capital reserve due to lack of implementation, so we could issue just like what we do on the city side, a matrix of our reserves and what the balances are. It seems like that's what you were asking for.
Yeah, that's my point. Like, even if we manage $25.6 million for this year, I would like to see what would be our balance at the end of the year, basically, if the situation remains the same. And so what is our future planning going forward?
So Ken answered it in terms of, we would look at, one is obviously the glimmer of good news is that the revenue for SBLs continues to come in where it's been able to cover the first term A loan. We do have the operating reserve, and it's at 11.6 million, and whatever we are not able to get credit for from the subloan ledger credit, then that would, the 11.6 million would be reduced by whatever amount we're not able to get credit for. And then we would then look at the capital projects, and as we've been reporting, there has been a significant slowdown of the implementation of capital projects, which means that the dollars that the board assigned and appropriated for those project implementations, we would want to reevaluate and see which ones may want to, we may want to push back and hold off, or which ones are urgent and need to be implemented. And we are preparing some information for the board on the status of capital projects because it definitely has a direct relationship with the maintenance of the stadium. And then the last is the discretionary fund, which is at about $2.3 million, but we can tidy that up and get that into a matrix like we report out regularly on the city side for reserves.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Authority Member Davis.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Ken, once again, I'm having an issue with the revolving loan. And, and the, the fact that in your report, it said that they are, you know, paying themselves with public funds without any backup, um, without compliance, without proper procurement. So, uh, what, what is our recourse on this?
So, uh, maybe I could comment and then, uh, Counsel Doyle could, could chime in as well. As far as the revolving loan, as, as you know, the, the board did not approve a, a handful of shared expense costs totaling about nine million dollars. We, we set that aside in the budget and under a legal contingency. Um, the stadium manager, uh, continues to invoice and, and bill us for those charges. They believe that uh, through, uh, what they provide to the trust that there's, uh, you know, projected expenses that are eligible that they, they claim, uh, could be used, uh, to use the revolving lon- loan for. Now, we have communicated to the stadium manager, the manager that we disagree with the use of the, the revolving loan, that the board, uh, approves the final budget, uh, for the stadium authority. Um, and so that, uh, I believe currently is also the subject of litigation. And, and that's where I would, uh, turn over to Brian if you have other comments on, on that.
Stadium Authority.
I, yes, um, thank you, uh, Ken. Thank you, um, uh, Board Member Davis. Um, the, yeah, Ken is correct that, um, the issue of the legitimacy of the drawdowns on the letter of credit are, are subject of actually several of the litigation, um, matters before the, both in arbitration and, um, hopefully in, in, in the judicial arbitra- the judicial, uh, litigation, uh, the validation action. Um, there's not much we can do until a court orders them to stop this. That's really the problem. Uh, they are handling our money. They're handling it in their way. We've sent them several, several statements of why we think that it's, uh, it's, uh, a breach of the contracts to, to be doing this, why it's a conflict of interest for them to be doing this. Um, but they just do what they do. And they pay themselves in the way that they see fit and don't really pay much attention to what the elected body that is governing the finances, um, enacts. There's not much we can do about it until a court rules otherwise.
Okay, um, thank you, um, city, um, stadium authority attorney. So Ken, what is the balance of that revolving loan right now?
So I actually have a slide, well, let's see. Um, I, I saw that my screen stopped sharing. So, as far as twenty twenty-one, the, the drawdown to date, it's about, uh, six point nine million dollars for the first quarter. Uh, it was roughly one point three million dollars. Uh, if, if they do draw down, uh, their budget of, uh, what was not approved, uh, we're projecting that it would be about nine million dollars by the end of uh, the fiscal year. That's assuming that they're going to use, uh, the revolving loan to, um, to pay for those expenses.
So you're saying that this, um, nine million dollars would represent twenty twenty and they still can do a drawdown on twenty twenty-one? Correct? I mean, this is continuous.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This, it's just to clarify, the nine million dollars I was referring to was for, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Oh, okay, thanks. All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. Um, I just wanted to.
But Board Member Davis, you are correct. This is the second year that this action has been continued.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. I mean, they're, they're continuing to draw down on this revolving loan until what the stadium authority attorney just stated, until this is cured within the, um, litigation. So, okay, that's all I wanted to know. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, do I have any other, um, uh, let's see here. I have, uh, Authority Member Watanabe.
Uh, thank you Chair, and, uh, thank you for the report, Ken. Um, my, uh, my concern uh, is regards the, um, the potential or possible rent uh, reduction as a result of the, the two games. Um, and I believe that it was reported over the weekend, uh, that the, uh, team was going to be going to Arizona and playing their games in Arizona and that the poss- there's a possibility of three games, three home games, um, not being played here. And so, uh, I understand, you know, it's, uh, I mean, this is a county action, um, stating that it's an untenable condition. The stadium is in untenable condition which require, which uh, requires the reduction. However, um, I'm wondering, uh, as we see, uh, COVID continue to increase and, um, uh, you know, the cases, the hospitalizations, I mean, not just here, but all over the country. Um, is it possible, um, that the NFL would cancel the remainder of the season, uh, because it's, I, I mean, a lot of people are going to take hits as a result of this. And even though it's, it, we didn't call this, we didn't make this decision, it was somebody else, but still, you know, our city, our stadium authority is going to be impacted in immense way as a result. Is there anything that we can do to appeal to the, uh, NFL or to see if there's any way that um, we can protect ourselves in this, in this regard?
Thank you, Board Member Watanabe for the question. Uh, the, the rent reduction is also a, a very, uh, concerning for us. Um, I can't comment really on, on what the NFL, like, will or would not do, or what recourse we have in terms of uh, petitioning them to have the game. I, I would say that we're looking at that third and final game, uh, and the potential impact. So when, when we look at our reserves, when we're looking at capital, um, reserves and, and all our reserves, we're, we're trying to understand, um, where, uh, that backup would go. But I, I, I don't think I could comment on, as far as um, what the NFL could do in the future in terms of whether they would, you know, cancel the rest of the games or, or not.
Well, they did it once. I would hope that they would maybe, um, do, consider doing it again. Um, okay. But thank you, Ken. I, I know it's a, it's a question that's hard to answer, but I had to ask it anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else with hands up? I don't see anyone else. So, uh, do I have a motion to, I believe it's to note and file the report?
Motion to note and file the report.
And accept it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's.
O'Neil.
By Authority Member Davis, second by Authority Member O'Neil, Assistant, um, Stadium Authority Clerk.
Vice Chair Hardy.
Yes.
Board Member O'Neil.
Yes.
Board Member Davis.
Yes.
Board Member Watanabe.
Yes.
Board Member Shahal.
Yes.
Mayor, uh, Chair Gilmore.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And thank you, um, Ken for that, for that, um, very, uh, thorough report. We appreciate it. All right. Next item we have on the agenda is the, uh, accept the report on the Santa Clara Stadium Authority's non-NFL events document by JS Held LLC and possible action by the Stadium Authority Board. Uh, Executive Director.
Good evening. Ken is going to continue to share his screen and I'm going to provide some introductory comments and then we're going to hand it off to, um, JS Held, Tim Gallahan. So let's move to the next slide. Um, just for background and discussion, as a reminder, on March twenty eighth, two thousand and twelve, the Stadium Authority and the Forty-Niner Stadium Company and Management Company entered into an agreement, um, with into a, the stadium management agreement. And that calls for the stadium manager to oversee the day-to-day operations, including financial reporting. In the agreement, under section, uh, four point one, the language reads that the stadium manager shall maintain complete and accurate books and records relating to the net income from non-NFL events in accordance with generally accepted accounting and management practices. Let's go to the next slide. Um, back in August two thousand and seventeen, after the council had commissioned the comprehensive audit of stadium authority finances, which is commonly referred to as the two thousand and seventeen Measure J Audit, the board was presented with the findings of those audits and several recommendations. Um, results were presented and upon my tenure, which was in October two thousand and seventeen, we began providing regular updates to the ad hoc committee for the stadium authority audit. And we provided implementate, uh, updates on our ability to implement various recommendations. As part of the Measure J Audit, there were recommendations that were about the accounting practices of the stadium manager and the quality of their record keeping. It was determined that the, that the financial practices were not as complete or as accurate as, as desired. And there was a interest on the part of the ad hoc, uh, committee as well as the board to look more deeply into what had occurred, uh, based on documentations over several fiscal years. In early two thousand and eighteen, I advised the Stadium Authority Ad Hoc Committee that in order to fulfill the board's directives, uh, that the stadium, um, that we would need to look at every, um, event as well as it should be done by an outside party, not the staff who had engaged in the management and/or the production of documents, which were the subject of the audit. Next slide, please. Additionally, um, after much effort, um, in working with the stadium manager, um, we too had concerns over the financial data and discussed our concerns about, um, the documentation and the information that we had received. We were able to receive in early two thousand and eighteen, uh, download, uh, electronic download from the stadium manager's general ledger of non-NFL event activities. And we were able to review the, that download of information against financial statements that had previously been presented to the board. And this is, these are, um, outlined on pages two and three of the staff report. But for example, for two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, there was discrepancies provided, um, based on the general ledger total net revenue for non-NFL events, which were stated at six point one five million. Um, and in the financial statements that were provided, the revenue, the net revenue was stated at five point two million. So it was reasonable and natural to ask the question, what has happened that has caused for the gap of nearly a million dollars between the general ledger, which provides the line item detail and the financial statements, which were produced and brought forward to the board? And if you just look at the report, you'll see that for, um, for fiscal year fifteen, seventeen, that discrepancy grew to one point seven three million. And so as this information was becoming clearer, um, we, I presented to, it's as a matter of public court, I presented, uh, the next slide, which was the extensive scope that would need to be underway in order to bring some answers to the questions that were being asked. And this slide should look very familiar to, um, those that were on the ad hoc committee because we did present it and talked about it at, at length in terms of what would need to occur in order to answer the board's questions. Um, and if you look at this slide, this is the scope of work and it basically requires that we receive documentation and supporting uh, information to support the numbers that were provided per each event and per each fiscal year. So if you look at your left-hand column, at the time we were dealing with the first four years of, um, the stadium authorities work with the stadium manager. And we were, um, looking at evaluating the first three years of all of the non-NFL events. And then once that we had the supporting documentation, we would analyze it and determine whether, um, where the discrepancies existed. And as I referenced earlier, we wanted to make sure that the work was being done with, uh, expertise, as we did not have the auditing function in place at the time when this question was being asked. And so if we can go to the next slide, the city engaged JS Held, which was previously HSNO, as a selected independent auditor. Eight, HSNO and JS Held are, what JS, uh, Held is a consulting firm that provides expertise in the area of forensic auditing amongst other consulting expertise. And they have provided services in accordance with the Statement of Standards for Consulting Services promulgated by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. The focus of the audit was on looking at discrepancies in reported non-NFL performance for the first three fiscal years. And, um, the exhibits in the report created, create additional SCSA questions. I'm sure as you read the lengthy report and looked at the multiple, uh, exhibits, you can see that, um, there are additional questions that are raised around bonuses, commissions, partner payments. And, um, that would require additional, um, scope if with the board would like to review those more closely. It wasn't that we, um, that are, we didn't work with a consultant to look into these issues, but they weren't part of the scope. And so we're bringing forward what the, what information we have now, but also raising concerns that we have and that those issues were not overlooked on the part of staff nor the consultant. Next slide. So I'm just going to introduce Tim Gallahan, who's going to be presenting today. He's the project leader for this engagement. Um, he has two BAs, one in accounting and finance, a master of arts in economics. He's a certified public accountant and he had, is an accredited business valuation with fourteen years of experience in forensic accounting. And so I'm going to hand it over to Tim to provide his presentation. And then we certainly can take questions along the, um, after the presentation that Tim provides. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Deanna. Um, and thank you to the council and to the public for taking the time to join tonight. The end of that background was very helpful and it actually overlaps a lot with some of the background that I was planning on giving tonight. Um, so I'll try not to dwell too much on those parts that we've already gone over. Um, I'm going to be sharing my screen here, um, shortly so that you can see the presentation. Here we go. Um, so as Deanna mentioned, um, we were engaged to review the non-NFL event documentation, um, as well as the performance, um, within those events to, uh, first assess if the documents, uh, were adequate in order to make determinations about the performance of the events. Um, and then to actually look at the events themselves and the documentation within those to see what the revenues and expenses were, um, and if they were fully supported. Um, I do want to mention that I'm here tonight with my colleague Linda Lu, uh, who's been instrumental in this analysis and report. I absolutely want to thank her for, uh, the hard work helping to pull everything together. So tonight.
I don't show that the screen is sharing. Perhaps it's just on my app. But can we confirm that his screen is sharing? There it is. Thank you. Now.
That was a user error. Um, so thank you for pointing that out, Deanna. So tonight, what we're going to do is go over some backgrounds, um, of how and why my team was engaged by the SCSA. I'll give them go into a summary of our findings, after which we'll dive into more detail about the process of analyzing the non-NFL event revenue. This will include going over a timeline of the process and briefly discussing the tasks we performed. We'll then go into more detail regarding the documents that we reviewed, which will include showing some examples of the records provided um, as support for the non-NFL event revenue. And we'll go over specifically what we found uh, constituted adequate documentation and what was inadequate documentation to support the results. I will con- will conclude with a list of recommendations, uh, to the board that my team has developed. And I do also want to mention that, uh, I'm aware that the Forty-Niner Stadium Management Company did issue a letter shortly before, um, the meeting started. Um, and I will address some of the, the issues that were raised, uh, throughout the presentation. Um, and then I'll also be open to, uh, to discussing other items that may, uh, come up at the end, uh, when I'm taking questions overall. So as, uh, Deanna already talked about, um, so this, some background I, I would give, but, uh, I'll try to go through it briefly. The, uh, stadium, uh, Santa Clara Stadium Authority is a public body, separate and distinct from the city and established to provide for the development and operation of Levi's Stadium. Uh, the Santa Clara Stadium is structured so that the city is not liable for the debts or obligations of the Santa Clara Stadium Authority. Um, I'll also, I'll be referring to the stadium authority as SCSA, uh, for the rest of the night. The SCSA entered into a stadium lease, uh, with an entity that I'll refer to as Stadco, which is a Forty-Niners, uh, stadium company, SC Stadium Company. Uh, SCA, SCSA and Stadco selected another entity called the Forty-Niners Stadium Management Company, or MANCO, to manage the day-to-day operations and maintenance of the stadium. The SCSA also. The SCSA also selected ManCo to market and book non NFL events at the stadium. So a little background on what constitutes non NFL events. They include what are referred to as ticketed events as well as non-ticketed events. And some of the terminology, um, is interchangeable with other words. Sometimes a non-ticketed event may be referred to as a special event or a catered event. Uh, ticketed events are events that are open to the general public, but require a ticket for admittance. Um, common examples are concerts, college football games and soccer matches, among other types of events. Non-ticketed events are private events, uh, such as corporate meetings or parties. In addition to booking the events, ManCo also keeps the accounting books and records for the non NFL events. Um, in 2018, I was contacted by the former treasurer of the SCSA to discuss documents received from ManCo and to clarify currently the former treasurer was the treasurer of the SCSA at that time. Specifically, the SCSA had been provided with spreadsheets by ManCo that detailed revenues and expenses for each event. But when the SCSA totaled up these spreadsheets, the totals did not match into the year totals that ManCo had provided for the first three fiscal years. And just for clarification, the fiscal years end in March. So the first three fiscal years ended in March of 2015, March of 2016 and March of 2017. So the slide that's showing now is one that Deanna already showed. This summarizes the SCSA's findings from mid 2018. And the, the middle column, um, with a long title, it says net non NFL revenue summary provided by ManCo recorded on SCSA financials. We see that ManCo had reported to the SCSA overall revenues of 50,980,519 and expenses of 45,772,966 for net income of 5,207,553. This is the net income figure that the SCSA then published on its website for the public. However, when the revenue and expense amounts from the detailed spreadsheets were provided to the SCSA in 2018, uh, when those were totaled up, the, uh, revenue and expense amounts were different. For the year that we're looking at here, for example, the overall difference was 942,025, which means that the net income from the detailed spreadsheets totaled 942,025 more than had been reported at a high level summary in 2015. This is the next fiscal year ending of March 2016. There were differences for all three fiscal years that had concluded by mid 2018. This slide shows the difference for that second year and the difference here, as you'll see in the bottom right-hand corner is 1,727,802 approximately. And finally, for the third fiscal year ending of March 2017, the previously reported net income was about 245,409 less than the net income when the detailed spreadsheets were summed. So the SCSA asked my team to analyze the records that ManCo had provided and tried to determine what accounted for these annual differences. And I want to point out here, before I get into some of the, the detailed work that we did, that the fact that there is a difference from the, the detailed documentation and the year-end results that have been provided previously does not necessarily mean that there was anything incomplete or inaccurate in those end-of-year results that had previously been reported. What it means and what it meant back in 2018, what it continues to mean now is that there is a difference and we want to understand what that difference is. So that's what our first task was when we were engaged by the SCSA was to identify what these end-of-the-year differences were and to determine if they made sense. So there's a lot of numbers on the screen. It may be difficult to evaluate, um, over Zoom. But this is an excerpt from a memo that we provided to the SCSA approximately a month after we had been provided, um, with the data. When we analyzed the revenues and expenses, we were able to, to pretty quickly isolate where the differences were recorded. So for example, if we look in the third column, again, if you're able to see this, it might be tiny print. Um, for the fiscal year ending March 31st of 2015, there was a revenue variance of 53,956. With the first summaries that we looked at, all we knew was that there was a $53,000 difference in total revenue. But by digging into more of the detail, we were able to determine that that difference was related to other revenue, which is a line item within the profit and loss statement. And that the financial, the detailed financials had 53,956 of, uh, of less revenue than what had been reported. And I believe I'm getting the signs, uh, correct there. Similarly, we, there were differences that we noted with the expenses. On an overall basis, we knew that the difference in expenses was 995,982. We were able to go back and find out that of that total, 767,000 approximately was related to operations, janitorial and maintenance items. And 229,000 approximately was related to miscellaneous expenses. So at this point, we had been able to identify where those differences have been booked. But we still didn't know what the actual entries were, what transactions accounted for those differences from the detailed spreadsheets, uh, to the summary level data. We met with the board of, of the SCSA to go over what the scope was and to discuss, uh, the, the preliminary findings that we had. Our scope was to determine if the annual results that were presented by the SCSA for the first three fiscal years of the stadium, uh, in the documentation as had been provided by ManCo were supported. The, we were also tasked with determining if the individual event results for the first three fiscal years were supported by adequate documentation. So taking a, a quick step back, where our first task was, the first part of the scope was to determine for these net numbers down here, these differences, what accounted for them. And we were able to fairly quickly break it down into different buckets for each year. But we were further tasked to find out what transactions accounted for those and did they make sense? Were they proper? Um, in terms of the type of entry that was booked as well as the timing. So with that, we will jump right into the findings and then we'll go into a little bit more detail about our work. So our first finding was that for fiscal years ending March of 2015 and March of 2017, we did identify the specific year-end adjustments that explained the difference between the sum of the results for the individual ticketed events and special events and the overall financial results reported for the non NFL events. Now this doesn't mean that the entries were correct or incorrect. It doesn't mean that they were proper or improper. It only means that at this point, we can identify what those specific entries were. Our second finding was that for the fiscal year that ended March of 2016, underlying documentation that would identify those year-end adjustments recorded by ManCo has not yet been provided. So, uh, to clarify, for 2015 and 2017, we had sent requests, uh, to ManCo and ManCo responded with detailed spreadsheets and supporting documentation that showed what the specific entries were that were made for those years. However, uh, we have not received that same documentation as, uh, for March of 2016 or for that fiscal year that ended in March of 2016. Um, so we have not been able to identify what those specific entries were that accounted for the difference. For the third, uh, summary, what we say is that these year-end adjustments should be further investigated, investigated, uh, to determine if the entries recorded were proper, both in terms of the type of expense paid and whether or not it was recorded in the correct period. Uh, and giving some background to that, uh, while we were working with ManCo, I mentioned that we were provided with, uh, underlying spreadsheets that showed what the transactions were, along with supporting documentation for those transactions. Uh, we had prepared detailed, um, what we call RFIs or requests for information that had additional questions for clarification on those entries. Uh, we submitted those, um, to ManCo and were working with them, um, awaiting response to those requests. Uh, when communications, direct communications from ManCo were terminated, um, I believe at the beginning of September. Our fourth summary has to do with the individual events. Um, regarding the reported results of the individual ticketed and special events, uh, the underlying documentation overall is inadequate for us to determine whether or not the results were reported accurately. So this is a similar problem that the SCSA encountered, um, in mid 2018. Um, and I discussed that in the report with the letter that the SCSA had provided to ManCo. I wish they spelled out some of the questions that they had about documentation. So overall, what this means is that these results, they may be accurate. So I want to be clear that by saying that there, the underlying documentation is inadequate for determining what the results were, we're not saying that the results were inaccurate, nor are we saying that they're accurate, but that from an accounting standpoint, uh, we're not able to say whether or not those results, um, are accurate because the underlying supporting records um, are not sufficient to document that. Um, so one of the, I do want to address, um, now one of the comments that ManCo raised in its letter, that it sent today. And they mentioned that it's, it's normal for there to be end-of-year adjustments that, uh, to accounting entries that you'll have results during the year that are compiled and you'll have preliminary, um, or pro forma type data that then gets updated later. There may be true-ups. There may be additional documentation that comes in, um, after certain dates. It may take some time in order to get those records. Um, and I would say a hundred percent, I completely agree with that. That is very normal in accounting for records to come in late, for there to be true-ups. Um, and I'll also state that in this instance, I would not, it is not unexpected that the results from individual events summed up would not equal the total, um, results reported for the year. Knowing that the individual events are not going to include some overhead that supports the entirety of the operations, but that can't be specifically tied to a certain event. So we certainly understand that that dynamic, um, exists. And that's part of what this, um, engagement is a large part. It's just to determine what were those entries that were made. Um, so we don't dispute that it may be proper to do that. But the question is, what were those entries? Uh, why were they made? When were they made? And what was the support? Just to make sure that all the entries that were made, um, are in fact proper, um, and accurate. So now I'm going to give a little bit of information on the, the timeline. I talked a little bit in the very beginning about some of the timing, um, with letters that were sent. Um, I felt that it would be helpful to show the process because this has been a, a lengthy process. Uh, it began, uh, for me back in June of 2018. Uh, so it's a little over two years into this process. And as the timeline shows here, there was a decent amount of activity in the first year. It was in early June that the SCSA had sent a letter to ManCo identifying issues with documentation that had been provided. And later that month, at the end of June of 2018, the SCSA reached out, um, to me to discuss the questions that they had about these documents. Uh, approximately two months after that phone call, we met with the SCSA staff to discuss the scope of the engagement. And a little bit less than a month after that, about four weeks, uh, we provided to the SCSA our analysis that showed where those end-of-the-year differences had been booked. So we had gone over a slide earlier that showed how we had been able to determine kind of which buckets those entries went to. Though at this point, we weren't able to determine what specific entries were made to account for that. We then met, uh, with the SCSA to discuss our year-end analysis about a month after we had provided our, um, summary. And we determined at that point, the scope of the engagement nailed it down. And at that point, the scope was to look at not just these year-end entries, but also to look at the, um, documentation for the specific events, um, to help the council get comfort. Or I'm sorry, to help the SCSA get comfort that the documentation was there to support the results that have been reported. Uh, about a week after that meeting, we provided a draft RFI to the SCSA and this was an RFI that would eventually go to ManCo. But we wanted to first provide that to the SCSA so that they could review it. And to the extent they could answer any of the questions we had, um, we'd go ahead and let them do that so that the SCSA could take a few items off, um, off of the deck. And then we could submit a, um, a shortened RFI to ManCo. Um, we then have a few conference calls in November of 2018 to discuss the RFI and the timing of, of when we would send it. At that point, it was of course in the middle of an NFL season. And we understood that there may be some other work going on. In early December, the first week of December, we received authorization to reach out to ManCo and, uh, request the documentation that we were, were looking for directly from them. Uh, we reached out to ManCo on December 10th of 2018. Uh, ManCo responded a couple of days later and, uh, discussed that due to uh, events that were going on that year with the football season, that it would make sense to wait until, um, early January of 2019. Um, that made sense. We did decide to go ahead and send our RFI memo to ManCo um, on December 26th to give time, um, for ManCo to review that before we had a phone call to discuss those items in early January. Um, so that was the process through 2018. Then in 2019, we had a phone call, um, on January 23rd to discuss our RFI and to go over the questions that we had, uh, both in terms of the individual events, um, as well as the overall year-end results. And to give a little bit of background into that, and, and the memo is included as an exhibit to the report. Um, we focused on a sample event, which was a Supercross event held in, I believe, 2016, uh, where we requested all of the documentation that appeared to be lacking for that event. In order to get a full understanding of, of what records ManCo kept, um, how they were able to, to go about, uh, pulling those records and, and pulling them together. And that would help inform our analysis going forward in terms of what additional information we may want to ask for. And whether we proceeded on a sample basis of the remaining events or whether we felt like we needed to look at documentation for all of the events. We also discussed the, the year-end true-ups. Uh, and the initial goal for me at that point was that it appeared that getting the, the understanding of these year-end true-ups, um, and when I say the year-end true-ups, I'm going to use a little bit of, um, accounting lingo that will sneak in. I'll try not to stick too much, um, to the, the, the lingo and try not to use the technical speak. Um, but sometimes I will, uh, I will do that. But a true-up just means that gets back to those differences between the overall annual result and the results of the individual event. So there was some sort of, there were transactions that bridged the gap between those two. And we thought that would be relatively easy to start with that point and get that documentation and, uh, get those questions addressed. And then later we would pivot to the individual events. We decided, um, after speaking with the SCSA, um, and as well as, uh, ManCo, to go ahead and do a dual track where we looked at the documentation and requested records for both those year-end adjustments as well as the specific events. Um, so about five and a half months after we provided the, um, the RFI and had the phone call, uh, we met with ManCo at the stadium to discuss the requests. And this was specifically related to the, um, request for the Supercross event. So we did not, I, I believe we did not at that point discuss any of the year-end results. We had not been provided yet with any of the year-end adjustments, uh, detail. That meeting was very helpful, um, and fruitful. I understand that the SCSA hired a couple of outside accountants to come in and help pool documents and put together a spreadsheet that responded to requests that we had. Um, so we spent that time to go through those documents, um, in detail with ManCo and the accountants that they brought on, uh, for that task. A couple of months later, maybe about two and a half months later, ManCo provided the year-end adjustment data for fiscal year ending 2017. Um, so at that point, we had a response to the request for the sample event, um, of, which was a Supercross event as well as documentation related to the year-end adjustments for 2017. Um, after we had had some time to go through the year-end adjustment data, we reached out to ManCo in early October of 2019, um, to request a meeting to discuss the year-end adjustments and questions that we had. And at the end of that month, we met, uh, to discuss those year-end adjustments, um, in, in October of 2019. Switching to 2020, uh, what we decided to do was to, we were still hoping to get all of the results for the year-end adjustments first before we dived into the, the details for the specific events, mostly due to how much detailed information would be required. Mostly due to how much detailed information would be required to go through even a sample basis of that analysis. And we didn't want to get off track from what seemed to be progress we were making on getting the documentation response for the year and adjustments. So February fourth of two thousand twenty, we received a workbook with year and adjustments for two thousand fifteen. We spent time analyzing those records. And then from late March up until September of this year, we would periodically reach out to Manco. And ask for status updates on some of the RFIs that we had sent related to the end of the year adjustments. As well as asking when the true up entries for the fiscal year ending two thousand sixteen would be provided. And then we were informed that as of September first, Manco had terminated direct communication with us. So at that point, it looked as if we would not be getting any further information from Manco. So that's a brief timeline of the events. Getting into the tasks that we did perform with the records that were provided. We looked at the ticketed and special events, all of the detail for the ticketed events and a sample of the special events. To determine what had been booked, as well as what supporting documentation existed for those. We did math checks for the events, for the event data that have been provided to make sure that there were no simple math mistakes. We also performed analytics on the events, which I'll talk more about later, to determine if there were any results. That that required following up, that may have raised questions that we would want to do some additional investigating and ask more questions of Manco. For the ticketed events, we looked at a hundred percent of the population. What that means in simple terms is that we looked at every piece of paper. In this case, they were soft copies, not hard copies. So every Adobe PDF page, we went through every spreadsheet that had been provided, we looked at in detail. And we made assessments of the documentation to determine whether or not it was an adequate document. That it did support what had been recorded on the financial statements. Or if it was inadequate for certain reasons. And we'll get more into the details of what adequate and inadequate means. For the special events, we did analytics on those events. And I'll talk more again about analytics in a little bit, what that means. But our analysis up to this point has really focused on the year end results and the ticketed events. So we have done less analysis on the special events, again, really focusing on the ticketed events. For the year and adjustments, again, we looked at a hundred percent of the population. What that means is that we looked at the year end differences for two thousand fifteen, sixteen and seventeen. We looked at all of the underlying documentation that had been provided. And we provided Manco with a comprehensive request list for additional documentation and information for follow ups. That would help us to continue to to bridge that gap and determine what was booked in those years and why those were booked. And for the ticketed and special events, we requested from both the SCSA and Manco copies of general ledger detail. That would include year and adjustments to verify estimated totals. As we understand, the SCSA does not keep a separate general ledger. They report information that is provided to it by Manco. But that's a basic overview. And I think the important thing that I will point out is that with the ticketed events and the year end adjusting entries. We took very deep dives into all of that information to make sure that we understood it, to make sure we knew what documents were provided. Where that was coming from and to make sure that we could talk about those with Manco, raise the questions to get the information that we would need in order to tie things out. So I'll now get into, I think, what what I would say is our main finding. Which has to do with whether or not the documentation was adequate. And so what I'm going to run us through here are examples of what we consider to be adequate documentation. And what we consider to be inadequate documentation in terms of supporting results that have been recorded. An inadequate and adequate, we're looking at this from an accounting standpoint. That we need to make sure that the information is reliable and can be confirmed. Back to the results that have been recorded. And one of the most reliable types of data would be a report or an invoice from a third party. And that's what we're seeing here. This is a report from Ticketmaster for ticket sales. They would provide these reports often on a monthly basis, not all the time. But these would show several different events totaled up. So there were not typically reports like this that were specific for an event. But they would show for a certain period of time. In terms of how many tickets were sold, what the face value was, credit card charges and other fees. So we would consider this coming from a third party like Ticketmaster to be a reliable, adequate source record. For documenting the underlying reported revenues and expenses. Similarly, so that Ticketmaster report was for the revenue side. Vent side, we would consider third party invoices to also be sufficient documentation. So this is an invoice that's coming from an entity that's not Manco, it's not the SCSA. And so it's typically an accounting work that would be considered a reliable source record. Of known conflicts of interest between the third party. But that is not anything that that we looked into or suspected in this case. So any sort of third party invoice that supported an expense that was recorded, we consider that to be adequate documentation. So now get into examples of inadequate documentation. And what we would consider to be inadequate would be printouts of spreadsheets that were prepared by Manco. And we'll go through a few examples of those. This document here is called a, it says daily log. At times, there was a similar document referred to as a Loomis log. And what these logs would do is they would essentially summarize data dumps of information. So we know there is underlying data that that this spreadsheet was created using. But this is not the underlying source record itself. This is a summary of that source record. When we went through the exercise with the Supercross event, we got some more detail for that event with the source data dump. That was likely in to summaries adequate would be those, the data dump straight from the accounting system. But a summary without us being able to go back and verify that the numbers tied out to that data dump would not be considered. And similarly, this is a very small sheet. This is a worksheet that was used to determine suite revenue. And looking at the number of suite tickets and what the prices were for those tickets. You'll see in the middle, there's a handwritten note for sweet ATP. ATP stands for average ticket price. A fifty nine dollars and eighty nine cents. And this is a summary worksheet of source data. And because it's a summary and not the source data itself, we would not consider this to be adequate documentation. In accounting, what we're looking for is what the actual underlying source are. We also received journal entry summaries. So this shows a journal entry that was made. And it shows the accounts that were booked. This is, it could be also an excerpt from a general ledger. But there's no underlying source record. This one is specifically for payroll. What we would want to see would be what the actual payroll reports show, whether it's something coming from a staffing agency like Nelson. That has an invoice that would tie out to these figures. Or whether there would be actual payroll reports where we'd see what what were the hours being charged, what were the rates? What were the, we wouldn't necessarily need to know the employees. But just having the actual source record to tie back to the entry that was made would be adequate. But a summary of what those entries were would not be adequate from an accounting standpoint. Similarly, there were invoices that were prepared by Manco. And I'd say this gets into somewhat of a grayish area. But in this particular case, there was not any proof of a deposit. We see handwritten notes on this invoice. Determining how certain monies are allocated to them, but we don't have the underlying detail for those records. And because it was created by the party that's also responsible for the doing the books and records. There is another level of scrutiny that an invoice like this would undergo. And not find it with terms of documentation. I mentioned before, copies of journal entries. This is an example of one of those journal entries. Where we see that a prepaid expense is being debited for eleven thousand dollars. Credit to accounts payable. But this isn't, it doesn't give us any detail on what is being booked. We don't have an invoice to determine what that is. So it may tie out to a description that Manco gave in terms of where this eleven thousand four hundred and thirty dollars was booked to. But as accountants, we would need to see the underlying documentation to see what was booked and was that entry proper and accurate. There are also screenshots of entries that were recorded into the accounting system. So this would be somewhat of a, you know, not quite a journal entry because it's just a screenshot of it. It's hard to tell from looking at this whether the item had actually been booked or not. And but putting that aside, the main issue is that again, we don't have the underlying source documentation. All we have is that an entry was made, but as an accountant, we would want to know what was being booked and be able to source that back to the underlying documentation. There were also emails between Manco accounting staff that were provided as support. This is one example, an email between one staff member to the other with some summary information about costs. But again, there's, there's not any sort of source record underlying this. And we would not consider an email between staff to be an adequate source record. Now I would take a step back and say that if we were talking about an unrelated party, a party that was providing services to the SCSA, but not responsible for the bookkeeping. Some of these might be considered adequate documentation. So for example, if we had an unrelated third party that charged the SCSA for services provided. And the support we were given was an email from that third party saying, here are the expenses that we charged. And here's what they were for. That may be considered adequate documentation. What makes this different is that it is coming from the same party that's keeping the books and records. So we don't have a level of independence that we would need in order to feel comfortable with considering that to be a source document. And I'll address it at this point, another issue that was raised by Manco in the letter that it issued today. They indicated that approximately seventy thousand pages of documents had been provided. And that thousands of those records were actual third party invoices and not Manco provided. Or Manco created spreadsheets or summaries. And I would say, you know, I will, I will trust them on the seventy thousand number. I did not add up the total pages myself. But I'll trust them for that. But the sheer volume of documents provided does not mean that the documentation itself is adequate. And whether it's seventy thousand pages or something else, we did go through and review every single page. To determine whether or not it was adequate from a standpoint of being sufficient to document and confirm that an expense or a revenue. Was recorded properly and accurately. Believe that Banco also stated in its letter that it had worked with a former accountant for the city. Finance official Tyler Cook and that he had signed off and had seen these records. I am not privy to those discussions between Mr. Cook and Manco that may have occurred earlier. But I did speak with Mr. Cook and others with the SCSA since we've been engaged. And the same issues that we have raised were raised by the SCSA and by others. So from my understanding, there may have been, I don't know what procedures were in place. For the SCSA to review and sign off on results prior to my engagement. But my task was to look at what documents had been provided and assess the adequacy. And I think we've been laid it out very clearly within our report. The reasons for our determination of the records being either adequate or inadequate. I also want to talk a little bit about the the analytics. I don't have any slides for that. But in general, what analytics means is that you perform calculations. You look at data in a holistic and a high level view, trying to find patterns and anomalies within that data that you may want to follow up on. So I took a look at the data, segmenting the ticketed events by category. So I analyzed all the concerts together. I looked at all of the college football games together, all of the soccer matches together. And the other various categories and looked at items, how such as what were the revenues? What were the ticket prices from year to year? What were the expenses like? Were they in line year to year? And I identified and I spelled out in my report, certain analytical results. Questions raised that we would want to further look into if we were still in communications with Manco, that we would ask them about for explanations. Manco mentioned in its letter that they were surprised that we would have questions about these issues. But again, the doing analytics does not mean that we're making a determination that something is off. It's identifying the questions to ask and to follow up on to make sure that the information has been reported accurately. And just to confirm that things are done properly. So the fact that a question is raised, again, does not mean that something is necessarily inaccurate. But as an accountant, that's part of the basic toolset of what you would do to ensure and look for areas where there may be some risks of something. Perhaps being reported inaccurately. So what we did is we looked for anomalies across revenue items and across expense items. And identified again, those areas where we would want to ask questions. So there may be perfectly logical explanations, and I would expect there to be logical explanations for most, if not all of those. But we wouldn't be doing our duty to be able to confirm what the results were if we didn't perform those analytics and didn't follow up on those questions. So that's something that, again, we, if we were still in communications with Manco, we would want to follow up and continue to ask questions to get those answers. That had been, that that Manco would have for those questions. So conclude with recommendations that we included within our report. And these recommendations cover a few different categories. Some of them talk about what the accounting policies would be to make the, to make this exercise easier in the future. And some of them go into the presentation, how should accounting results be presented in order for the SCSA and for the council to make good decisions? About the types of events that should be held and how the SCSA should operate with non NFL events. So one item that we think is very important is that accounting policies, processes and estimates should be consistent, well documented. And shared among the SCSA and Manco accounting staff. I think this gets to a question, one of the issues that Manco raised in its letter, indicating that they felt that some of these items had already been signed off on by the SCSA and somebody reviewed them. But it's clear that there is, there's confusion between parties in terms of what the policies and processes are. What types of documents are considered adequate and what needs to be provided. So for transparency sake and for helping to make these processes go more smoothly in the future. We think that those policies should be designed and implemented in order to help make things more clear. And to foster cooperation between the parties. We would also recommend improvements to maintaining and organizing the accounting records. We understand that this may be in process now, that there may be a new accounting system that's being set up. But the current process, it sounds like one of the reasons why it would take sometimes quite a long time to get responses back from Manco. Was that they would indicate that some records were kept in dusty boxes in a warehouse somewhere offsite. So we would recommend things like digitizing the records, making them available to not just Manco staff, but to the SCSA staff. At any time, records can be quickly accessed and looked at. And I think that would do a lot, again, to help smooth this process in the future and to just foster a sense of transparency and clarity between the parties. Getting to the presentation, I would feel that revenue categories should be more descriptive and properly segmented. As an example, with the special events, the profit and loss statement had two revenue categories. One was called rent and one was called food and beverage. When we were first getting into the analysis, what that sounds like to me is that the rent would include essentially a facility fee paying for the the privilege of using the facilities. And food and beverage would be related to, of course, any sort of food and beverage expenses. What we found when we got dug into the data was that the rent, what was called rent actually included almost every kind of revenue. So it would include entertainment if that had been booked. It included food and beverage. I mean, in fact, for many of the events, the majority of the food and beverage cost was included in what was called the rent revenue category. So then the, the food and beverage category was often just a commission shared with center plate. And that did not reflect the entirety of the food and beverage revenue. This was one of those things that that was uncovered in doing analytics. We also were able to look into the source records and see that the source records supporting the rent revenue included many other categories. But when they ran the analytics, the food and beverage costs or the the revenues looked significantly less than what we would have expected. So that's again, one of the reasons why we would do analytics to uncover things like that. Um so that's again, one of the reasons why we would do analytics to uncover things like that. I would also recommend that uh the direct cost and indirect cost, operating expenses and other overhead be disaggregated and shown in a clear manner. This gets to those year-end adjustments that are made. It's difficult when we look at the results for each year and for each event to determine what are the indirect costs that are being allocated to each event. Um at this point, we we still don't know exactly what those indirect costs are that were allocated for fiscal year two thousand sixteen. Um and no way to see that on an easy basis as you're within a year. Um and even shortly after the year, it's difficult to see that. So we would recommend that the accounting information be presented in a way that makes it easy to determine what are the direct costs for each event and what are the indirect costs that are being allocated um to each event. Um this gets into that as well. This other recommendation was that the allocations of overhead expenses um should have a separate expense category line. Um there were some times when we would have what is referred to as these year-end adjustments, true-ups uh below the line items. Um it's been referred to where some of the overhead is allocated, not to any specific events, but just overall at the end of the year. Um and there are other events where there appeared to be some overhead that was allocated uh between events. So there needs to be more clarity within those, and if there are allocation rates, um one of those would be janitorial expenses and depreciation, which are allocated um uh using certain rates. Uh those should be um first of all, very clear and defined within a set of policies and documentation. And those rates should be evaluated periodically and updated when appropriate. Uh this also gets to, I I believe payroll tax was an issue that required some some fairly sizable true-ups um and changes because of the actual tax changing, but the allocation rate not being updated um consistently. Uh the expense category should be consistent year over year. Um there were uh within, again, special events, I'll use it as an example. Um there were some years when food and beverage included in one overall food and beverage category. And then in subsequent uh year, in a subsequent year, it was broken out so that there was a line item, I believe, for Center Plate, uh a line item for Papa John's, for other vendors. So that makes it very difficult to quickly compare performance year over year. Uh so it'd be much simpler if those expense categories were consistent so that when the SCSA is evaluating the performance of events, they can easily see how the expenses have changed over time and identify areas where there there may be improvements to be had. Uh revenues and expenses, to the extent possible, should not be netted together. Uh we'll give a couple of examples of this. Uh one on the revenue side, um is that sometimes there would be uh reimbursements that would be called part reimbursements, where a promoter would reimburse uh the SCSA um and or Manco for certain expenses. Instead of showing overall basis what those expenses were and what the reimbursements were, the items at times would be completely netted together, sometimes on what was called a partner payment and guarantee line. So it's very difficult, again, to compare events um from event to event because there were expenses and revenues that were buried um within netted accounts that was very difficult to pull apart. So we would recommend that those individual expenses be recorded on the the proper um expense lines and revenue lines so that, again, there can be consistency from report to report. We would also recommend um direct involvement of the SCSA to oversee, review, and sign off on the financial reporting for each ticketed or special event. Um and that would essentially be a lot of the exercise that that we've done going through the individual events. Uh be great is is to have the SCSA um do that after each event in real time to so that Manco would be informed of documents that would be inadequate or adequate um and be able to to respond more quickly that way. It does get more difficult as more time passes. So this gets to also the recommendation of having clear and consistent policies. I'm gonna throw as a policy to look at the events um as they conclude and agree on those items, that would be very helpful. I understand that there was some level of that, um but from what we saw, there did not seem to be consistency uh from year to year. And finally, a recommendation, um as far as the completion of the engagement, we would recommend that the SCSA continue to um pursue obtaining adequate documentation for these events. Um and that those um the financial result are vouched and that the key contracts, agreements, and leases are also looked at. That's one thing that we did not do within our scope is we did not, uh it was not within the scope to tie back the results to the contracts for each event to make sure that they adhere to the contracts, uh nor did we um true it up or tie it back to the overall agreements and the lease, which do have some specific requirements for how uh revenues and expenses would be treated. So we would recommend um that if there is a a party that continues to uh to analyze that, that they, the SCSA engaged them to also do that analysis. Uh we would recommend an analytical review of the reported results for uh mark the year's ending March eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Uh one of the reasons for this is that, from what I understand, there have been significant changes in the the uh non NFL net revenue that's been reported um in the last couple of years, uh the revenues, the net revenues have decreased significantly. Um it would be helpful and I think useful for the SCSA to have those events analyzed in concert with the first three fiscal years to get an idea of of what's really changed over time. And I think that would be useful for helping to plan in the future to determine which events um should be continued, what events should be pursued, and perhaps what events um should not be pursued. And one thing I'll point out is that I believe for the um college football games that we looked at, I don't believe that there were any college football games that actually had a profit, um and sometimes the losses were quite large. Um so that may be useful information for the SCSA to have to determine um if that is something that that should continue to be pursued. Perhaps there's other reasons to do that besides um profit. But it's hard to make those decisions without having um all of the information in front of you uh to do that. And we would also um you recommend that there uh it'd be discussions with SCSA's current financial statement auditor, KPMG, to um continue to review these, determine what uh level of detail has been looked at. And perhaps some of the um some of these tasks may be able to be ticked off uh by the auditor um at that time. So that wraps it up for the presentation. Um I'll now leave time for questions. Uh yeah, I really appreciate everybody's time um going through this and look forward to to answering any questions that you have.
Um thank you very much for that presentation. Um it's so thorough and the report was was very, very thorough, so I'm sure that there's going to be some questions out there. Um so uh I'm gonna start with Authority Vice Chair Hardy.
Thank you so much. I will tease you. If I can pass a test on this, do I get college credit in accounting?
Well, you know, I think if you are a CPA, you might be able to to get one hour of continuing education.
No, I'm an engineer and a schoolteacher, so that won't work. Okay, so what I I heard very carefully is there was a difference in the revenues re-reported and then when the documentation was given that uh our revenues were lower and that wasn't completely explained in the documentation, if I understand correctly. And then there were indirect costs, expenses such you said, maintenance, janitorial, miscellaneous, things like that that um bridge over different events that wouldn't be billed directly to a situation but um do occur and that there wasn't adequate documentation. I mean, do I have a good handle on that?
Um I yeah, I think so. I always like to rephrase things myself just to make sure that there's not any misunderstanding with it. So um yes, there were end of the year um essentially allocations of expenses. A lot of that had to do with payroll. Um I believe there was some depreciation. Um what depreciation is, is it's taking
Oh, I know.
Yeah, to to the extent that others in the the public or council might be So it's if an item is purchased that you're gonna get use out of for more than the current event or the current year, and you would recognize a little bit of that expense over time. Um and so some of those things like like the you know scoreboards, signs, TVs, items like that might be used by different events, um but it's hard to say exactly how much cost should be allocated allocated to that event. So those would be allocated um on at the year end, and those were some of the entries that we would see um that accounted for twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen. And I would assume that some of those entries also would account for the difference in two thousand and sixteen, um though we haven't seen it. And then forgive me for, could you restate the first part of your
Well, and then so that was the difference in the expenses, but then you also mentioned that there was a difference in revenues from the true-ups from the overall. And then when uh there was more detailed documentation, there were, there seemed to be a not a consistent amount, but a consistent concern that there were lower revenues brought in than what were originally reported. Is that correct?
Um you know, not necessarily. I would say that on an overall basis, um when we're talking, and I want to, maybe I should clarify um the the use of the word revenue, because I think there's kind of two main definitions for it. The importance for um for the SCSA is the net revenue number, which is essentially net income. That's taking your your top of your gross revenues and subtracting out all of your expenses. And that's called net NFL uh or net non-NFL revenue. Um but it's a little, it's that that term is a little misleading and confusing because it's actually uh not net non-NFL income, not just revenue because it's net of expenses. But into that for two thousand, I believe for two thousand um for the first, for two of the three fiscal years, and I don't want to misspeak by saying which years they were. But for two of the three fiscal years, the net income was lower um as reported at the year end than if you added up all of the individual events together. For one of the years, it went the other direction. Um and that was a year, I believe that was a year for which we didn't have the the um the results, but again, I don't want to misspeak, so I'll be careful about. I don't want to, I don't want to put out there that that was the case. I could try to open my file and and refresh my memory. Um but I would say that it makes sense to me on an overall basis that a number, a net number that is reported after year-end adjustments would be less than the sum of all of the individual events for the reason that it's very unlikely that you would have revenue, any sort of receipts, that aren't tied to a specific event. The SCSA is not getting donations from people. Um they're not getting an overall sponsorship um that wouldn't be tied to a specific event, at at least as has been reported um in these financials. So all I would expect to see would be changes to the expenses, and the changes I would expect would be increases because you'd have that overhead that needs to be allocated. So it it makes uh it makes sense to me that the year-end numbers would be less than the net revenue as reported in the individual events. The one year that it went the other way, um that one, I I would have some more questions. I do have more questions about why it would have flipped the other way. Um and then there were some events that had, I'm sorry, there were, there was some revenue that was not booked to specific events, but it was booked to the other revenue category. But as we dug into the details, we found that you can allocate that revenue to specific events because, again, it wouldn't make sense to have a revenue that doesn't tie to an event. Nobody is is paying the SCSA to not go to an event. So um what those, what it seemed to be was revenue perhaps recorded late. There was some information that came in later. There was um an agreement with Prime Sports where there was a ticket bank and uh tickets were um given to uh to Manco or Statco to be able to uh to use personally, and those could be tied to specific events, but they just hadn't been. Um so I I hope that answers the question. I think I might have gone into additional but hopefully that helps.
I appreciate that. One last question. This is very over, right, overreaching um determination as an accountant. Um is there a lot of difference or could you account for any of the differences in the way that public money has to be and must be accounted for and how a private enterprise would behave? Do you see any um because your recommendations are based on what I would consider basic accounting process. But I do know that a public entity must do these and a private entity maybe should choose to do them. Um do you see a disconnect between the public and private way of handling business and money and records?
Um you know, I I think it would be outside of my scope to comment on how public monies should be accounted for um and should be handled. I think that the way that I approached this was similar to any sort of um any sort of of analysis of documentation. I did not apply a stricter or less strict standard in determining whether or not the records uh were adequate. So yeah, I I think, does that make sense?
So you're saying that you're, you held up a standard that you think any entity should be able to meet?
Yes, definitely. I would say that it would be, you know, basic um the basic accounting and bookkeeping to have underlying sourced records that would substantiate the accounting transactions that were made, definitely.
Thank you. I appreciate your help.
Ma- Chair, may I chime in, please?
Please, go ahead.
The Vice Chair raised a very important um statement that I want to make sure isn't lost on the rest of the board. Um and 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 I know we're talking a lot in technical terms, but I'd like to simplify it a little bit of why what the Vice Chair and Tim's response matters. Um the issue came up around the distribution of costs by event. And in the in the report and the documentation, there's a lot of comment around how the costs are distributed, depreciation, and the methodologies of assigning cost and whether um the percent assigned between um the stadium authority and the Statco should be validated by way of um how how it's used. That's important because obviously how those costs are distributed have a bottom-line impact to the stadium authority. But putting that aside, I think we all captured that point. Um and having it be unknown is is not regular in either um a private sector or public sector entity. You, everybody should have command of those types of distribution of cost. But what also needs to be accounted for is that um as we as we begun this discussion, we do not have information about shared expenses and how particularly um what supports, what granular level and and detail supports shared expenses. We also get high-level numbers as part of the budget development process that um includes um quote-unquote the operations for the stadium manager that we have very little information about what that supports, except for just the categories for which they put those numbers in. And that too is important because included in the shared expenses, you have an overhead rate. And um and that could have information with respect to um normal cost of of distribution amongst events. And so we really don't know um the bucket on the budget development side for day-to-day operations and what's that funding from a payroll and 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 day-to-day operations level. And then on top of that, we don't have baseline information on how those costs per event is distributed. And I think um that that's something that um Karen, you said it and um as part of your, as part of your question, but that's why it's important to the board and that those are answers that uh we should be able to have at at any moment in time. I hope that was clear.
I will say for me it was, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Oh, um. Okay, then uh next we have Authority Member Chahal.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report, Tim, uh and very exhaustive, and that's good. So best thing I liked was the recommendations. I do understand there are a lot of uh accounting issues which we need to resolve mutually, basically. There is uh I think it's both ways. Uh we are not getting the proper documentation and we don't have a have had a proper oversight also. Like if we would have corrected these things on time, I don't think we would have been at this pace where we are right now. But coming back to uh the issues, once you uh got the true-ups and you understood how they are adjusted, the year-end general entries, they pass all the general entries at the year-end to fix the anomalies between Excel sheet and the uh stadium authority budget numbers we're given. So can you recap? I know you didn't do twenty sixteen. You only did the year-end twenty fifteen and year-end twenty seventeen. So is it correct that after you got all the data, your year-end difference was only eighty-seven thousand dollars or something for your year-end difference was only $87,000 or something for year-end 2015?
Um, no, I, I wouldn't say that is, that's accurate. I'm looking through, um, my report to try to, to find that number, to make sure I, I address the, uh, the exact question accurately. I would say that on an overall basis, we, you know, we, we understood what those adjustments were. But we did have a lot of follow-up questions for Manco in terms of what exact, why certain entries were made and, and when they were made. There were some possible, um, issues with timing, things being booked um, in a subsequent period that should have been booked in the prior period, items like that, that we wanted to follow up on. But we didn't, we didn't have that chance to unfortunately. So, um, I think we, we still at the end of the day have, we have the difference that we have. I don't think that's changed, but, uh, it just means we, we have some more information. So we know exactly where to zero in on if we were to continue, um, working with them. And I'll say that it's still my, my hope, um, because I thought when we did work together, the couple of times that we met, I felt like we worked together well and, and I thought they provided helpful information. So I, I do still hold out hope that we'd be able to, to work with them to get that final information to bridge the gaps.
Okay, because I was referring to, uh, page 11 of your report. And, uh, there we have that, uh, net income and loss of $87,006 under $3. So I, I was zooming down.
Thank you. Yeah, that is, that is just for the special events. Um, and what that has to do with is, um, so this is actually a separate issue from the, those year-end true-ups that we had that all of the individual, um, P and Ls for the special events. And this was in a workbook that had been provided by Manco. It listed out every event and there would be, you know, close to 200 events in a single year. So it was a fairly large spreadsheet that would have all of the revenues and all of the expenses for, for all of those events. And at the very last column was a sum of, or it was the total for that year. But if you summed up just all of the special event items and you compared it to the totals that were in that same spreadsheet, they were off by this $87,000 number. But then there were differences within each category that we identified. Uh, so it was one question that we had for Manco that we haven't heard back. Why for the special events, if you add up all of those line items separately, it doesn't equal what the totals are? And that's actually different. I mean, and kind of compounds the other issue because the year-end true-ups would take, if we're looking at that page 11, I know not everybody has the, the luxury of having that page in front of them. The net income for that year was 2.7 million from special events. You would add that to the ticketed event net income. And then from that, you would make these year-end adjustments. So there was some sort of adjustment that was made within the special events before there was another adjustment that was made to the overall results. So I'm glad you brought that up. I think it's important to point that out. It's, it was a relatively small difference for special events for that year, but it's still, for us, it's, um, we're unsure why in this detailed spreadsheet that had all of the results for all of these events, did the total column in that spreadsheet not actually sum those up, but somebody hardcoded figures in there? And they don't reconcile to the individual line items. Does that help?
Yeah, I, I get it. So basically you are awaiting some more information to support, uh, the difference of 87,000.
That, that would be correct, yes.
Okay, we got it. And coming back to 2017, so what are your, uh, like end result for 2017 versus what you saw on the first day versus what you end up after doing all the, whatever data you got. So what are your summing up for 2017 is?
So we are, you know, still focused on, on trying to account for those differences. I think the total difference for 2017 was $245,000. And we've been able to trace a lot of those entries, um, to specific events. Um, and kind of bridge, put, put together what we call bridge entries, where you take what the end of the year results were for each ticketed events or special event. And then add in these different adjustments to the events that if it is event-specific, we'd add it in there to, to help do that bridge. I would say that the next step, we, we understand what those entries were, um, in fairly high detail. Um, I think the next step would then be to go through some of the, the, um, line items, specifically with expenses. And just make sure that the expenses were, um, were recorded correctly and that the revenues were recorded correctly. So one of the items, um, that came up, I believe it was in 2017, had to do with that, with the prime sports revenue. I believe it was in that year. And so we would want to make sure that that was booked properly. We did have some questions as to whether some of that should have been booked, um, perhaps in the, in the prior year, depending on which events it related to. Um, and then for the expenses, when it comes to the, uh, specifically payroll, um, and depreciation, we would want to make sure, I think this will be a conversation with the SCSA to determine, you know, these individuals, does it make sense for their salaries to be allocated, um, to the SCSA, um, overall? For the most part, what we would see is, is an overall salary number, um, plus payroll tax. And 90% of that would be allocated to the SCSA and 10% um, to Stadco or Manco. So we would just want to verify for those, do those allocations make sense? Is the SCSA comfortable with that? Or do they feel that, that they need more information? I wouldn't be able to make that determination myself in terms of are the allocations proper? Because getting back to the recommendations, um, there's not a clear, consistent, uh, kind of guide for how those expenses should be allocated. So it could be that after going through those details with the SCSA and with, um, Stadco and Manco for the, uh, fiscal year 15 and fiscal year 17, uh, we may get fairly comfortable with those, but the big caveat is that we're missing 2016. And I, I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable from an accounting standpoint, um, kind of signing off on years that booked in the middle year, only don't know what happened within that year, especially since we have questions about timing. So that's all to say that it could be, and, and I always expected from the very beginning of this to be a relatively simple and straightforward exercise. And, and Manco, um, stated as such that they felt that it would be very straightforward. I think that's why, I think everybody's a little frustrated that here we are, you know, a couple of years later and there's still answers to what, um, I felt would be fairly simple questions that we're working to get.
Thank you. I had that question, uh, basically for the staff, uh, like 90% of the salary. How did we come, if we ever come to that number, like, uh, is it the non-NFL season, the staff is basically being utilized for 90% of the time for, stadium, um, stadium authority, like, uh, can staff comment on that, like, uh, is that number correct or is that number not correct? If not correct, what should be the right number?
Can you, is there a particular page that you're referencing or?
It is multiple on, uh, let me see if I have a page number here.
Are you just asking in general how staff assigns time?
Yes, in general, basically, because, uh, on both of them, they have used the 90% number for the staff salaries to be utilized. And I'm not sure what staff they were putting on there, but 90% of that expense has been used at the salary wages and bonus category.
Okay, I, I remember. So that, that's part of my comments earlier is on the shared expenses and on the distribution. We, we don't have information of their methodology and how they justify the assignments of those costs. Um, and I, I referenced the shared expenses because what we do is we, we track our time hourly and we record the hours that we spent and code it for payroll purposes. So that when, for instance, I'll use myself as an example. When, um, when we, when we put our budget together, we assume that my budgeted costs are going to be about 20% at the end of the fiscal year of my salary, because that's what on average the time has been. We track that to make sure that when we record for the board, what the budget allocation should be is I'm right in that range of 20% and therefore there's, there's that justification. We on the, on the stadium authority side, we provide that level of detail to the stadium manager for every staff member and what their trend has been and, um, and therefore how that justifies putting forward a budget. So our methodology is transparent, it's based on payroll, it's based on trend information that we can substantiate. On the other hand, the information that they've provided with respect to commissions and 90% um, assignments, we just don't have that information. And, and I believe that's something that Tim also expressed, you know, that we concerned and that we should have that to understand how they've come to those numbers and assignment of cost. So we have, we have a very clear methodology that we've been very transparent with on the shared expense side as to how we justify our costs. We've asked the same for them over several fiscal years, um, but we do not receive that.
So I, my comments on that is because in our case, like, take your example as such. Uh, as an executive director, you put some time, but you put in so much other time into other different departments. So you are able to. But in case of stadium, we have a six-month and six-month basically. Like six months is NFL season, six months is a non-NFL and special event. Uh, if I, there can be a special event which can take place during the NFL event also. So are these 90% of the six-month salary? Or are these 90% of the full year salary of somebody who's working for, uh, non-NFL and, uh, special event?
Yeah, I would say that's, that's a great question. I think that's part of what we were following up on. To determine those allocations is over what period, uh, of time the sal, the total salary was. And then also looking at that further allocation to determine, you know, is that, like you said, is that 90%? Is it just the 90% of, of six months or is it 90% of 12 months? So that, that's exactly the, the type of question that we would be, um, asking.
Okay, and I.
We don't have that information, although we have asked.
Okay, okay. Right. So we need that. And the depreciation, like, is the same rule applies on depreciation, uh, like, uh, 50%? I know they put it 50% on one. Is it because 50% of the time it's being utilized by NFL season and 50% being utilized by the city? Is that correct to say, Mr. Tim, or?
So for the depreciation, um, that we saw allocated, it was largely for audiovisual equipment. Um, and in discussions with Manco, they indicated that, and they did provide a list, the, but they said it's, it's not, they, um, represented that it's not used for NFL games, that it's items like, um, slide projectors and speakers and, and essentially small type of like presentation type equipment. Um, that they said, obviously would, or they, again, indicated it would not be used for NFL games, which would be more like the big speakers and, and big screens, um, and all of the things within the stadium itself. So they, I, we did not do any sort of verification of that to be able to track down, you know, where the equipment was, um, and that sort of thing. But it wasn't, it wasn't depreciation for all of the equipment within the stadium. It was that AV equipment within specific rooms. And they said those rooms were mostly used for, um, special events. So they weren't even, it wasn't a lot of equipment from what I recall that would have been used during concerts or, or ballgames that were non-NFL related games. It was mostly related to special events, small events, if somebody was having a meeting there. So I think that's something that would, again, you know, depending upon kind of a materiality threshold, if, if this is further investigated by the SCSA, those will be the types of questions that, um, certainly whoever's looking at this would want to ask and find out about. But my, from what I gathered for these items that were being depreciated and allocated to the SCSA, I mean, it was 90% of the entirety, um, of it, but for equipment that was deemed to be non-NFL event specific.
Okay, and. Before you go on, um, authority member Chahal, uh, uh, city, uh, stadium authority attorney, um, Brian Doyle has a comment on that item. Brian?
Yeah, oh, it's just a, a follow-up question, uh, Mr. Gillahan. Were you able to determine who is making these allocations?
Um, as far as a specific person, um, at Manco, um, no. I, I, I think that we would, we would assume it was, you know, accounting staff, um, who's being supervised by, you know, accounting management. But in terms of, of a specific person, I, I don't think we can say who it was that was making these determinations.
And did any, did any of the salary allocations were for, um, for accounting staff salary? Or financial staff salary?
We did not do any sort of, um, digging to, to look up names of people. Um, and, and you'll notice in our exhibits, we've redacted any names of individuals as well. So we did not look to see what positions the people held. We know from some of the payroll items, commissions were a large part of it. I mean, commissions, I would, it seems logical that they would apply to sales in some way. Uh, but we wouldn't be able to see any further past that to see sales for what, um, or, yeah, who, what the, what department the individuals were in or who's, what specifically their role was.
And, 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 and for the sake of the board members, the reasons I'm asking these questions is, is, uh, under, uh, state conflict of interest laws, people who are benefiting by a financial decision should not be making that decision. So if, if the decision about allocating, for example, Scott Sabatino's portion of his salary to the stadium authority, that decision should not be, be, being made by Scott Sabatino. So, um, and that in fact could be a, um, a violation of government code section 1090. So I, there, there, there remains for the, uh, for the benefit of the board members, there remains quite a few very, very serious, um, pieces of information we need to understand to ensure that the, their self-dealing is not occurring in, in the course of these, um, allocations.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Go ahead, Mr. Chahal.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Coming back to the depreciation, now we did approve some of the CIP budget for stadium authority recently. Uh, for some public safety, hmm, expenses. So would that be part of 100% depreciation on those equipment would be on stadium authority or would that also be bifurcated between, uh, NFL and the stadium authority? That's a question to my, my staff. I know Tim will not be able to answer that question. But going forward, like, is, how we do depreciate that equipment, basically, when we fully bought under the stadium authority budget?
I, I would, um, I would ask Ken to answer that question, but my, um, my instinct tells me that we would not depend on the stadium manager to, to account for, the stadium authority public safety equipment, but I could be wrong. And, and I just would like for Ken to provide more detail if he has it available. If not, we'll get back to you on that.
Great, thank you for the question. So, um, just to make sure I understand the question, do, do we on the stadium authority depreciate public safety, uh, equipment purchases in our financial statements? And I would say yes, it, it is on the stadium authority side. You know, for those equipment purchases that are part of the stadium capital budget, based on the useful life of those uh, equipment, we do, we do have, uh, depreciation, uh, in our financial statements.
Okay, so I just want to clarify, even though those equipment may be used for the six months of NFL games, but we still be 100%, whatever depreciation we'll be doing, like scale of seven years or 10 years, it will be 100% uh, depreciated in the stadium authority budget, not going to the Manco budget, right?
The, um, it, yeah, it would be depreciated because the stadium authority is required to, um, provide the capital, either improvements or equipment, um, such as public safety equipment, those would be uh, depreciated on the, um, stadium authority side 100%.
Okay, and so that brings me to the same question. So whatever stadium authority buys, it has to be depreciated under stadium authority, basically, whether it's being used for anything in the stadium. But it should be depreciated under stadium authority, uh, budget, in the stadium authority budget.
Yeah, for, for any purchase that we own or any, uh, capital improvement on, on the asset, we, we do include, uh, entries for depreciation, uh, on behalf of the stadium authority.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Uh, Tim, my next question is, uh, I know you tried calling KPMG and you did not, uh, you did get hold of, uh, one of their representatives, but you could not get hold of the actual auditor who did the audit. So why didn't we pursue in writing to them? Like, I know we did pursue a lot of in writing for these things. It was their reason we did not pursue, uh, to ask them in writing the questions we had, basically?
Um, so I did follow up, um, and I guess if, if email is considered writing, I would say that the majority of my correspondence with, uh, actually all of my correspondence with, uh, Manco was also via email. There were attachments, uh, like memos to that, um, but was in, you know, email format. And so that was my same, um, method of, of communication with, uh, KPMG. In addition to, to a phone call, as you mentioned, I did have a phone call with, um, with one of. Um, in addition to, to a phone call, as you mentioned, I did have a phone call with, um, with one of the uh, audit partners there, um, but was unsuccessful in, in getting ahold of the manager um, to speak with. But it was a, a combination of, you know, written emails um, to set up a time as well as phone calls.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so I also looking at uh, the good summary of, uh, you made a summary on page twenty-six about the various events and the results of that. And uh, just to recap, like I just want to comment on those, basically. Uh, the concerts, each concert netted us almost an average five million dollars. Each soccer game netted us almost six hundred seventy-nine, sixty, seven hundred sixty-nine thousand uh, per game. It's a net income, basically. And college football, you rightly mentioned, we lost uh, every college football game, we lost one point one four eight uh, million. And total loss was eight million dollars. And school football, we lost uh, forty-one thousand dollars and total loss was almost two hundred six thousand. And again, we lost on Monster Jam and uh, Supercross, we lost almost uh, two hundred ninety-eight K. We did make money on that one hockey game, almost one point two four million. And wrestling, we uh, net income was one point twenty-six million. So I would like to highlight that, like, if you look at the concerts are the best uh, events, uh, income-making events. And college football games were the worst one. And I would say that stadium authority should be analyzing these things and then taking a decision going forward. That we should have sort of a uh, power to allow our event, not to allow our event, depending on the fiscal response, fiscal output of that particular event. And we should be working out something on this aspect, how we can make this thing work. I know they already mentioned there will be no more college football games, that's a good news. Uh, but we should also be looking at what are our best uh, uh, net income-making uh, events so that we can have more of them down the line. Okay, and-
Could I, could I just comment on that, board member? There, there is a, a section in the um, in the agreements, it's section three point three that does allow for the stadium authority. Um, and I believe though there is a, a li, language in there that says without limitation that we on a quarterly basis um, should receive reports from the stadium manager about any of the contracts that they are about to ent, entertaining, entering into um, and to have entered into and a schedule of events. And it does allow a timeline thereafter on when we are supposed to get information about revenue and, and just the financial reporting for those events. We have not been a successful in getting the, the stadium manager to provide those reports fully. They do give us some redacted uh, reports and have in the past um, on a quarterly basis on events that are, are possible events. But we do not get the contract so that we can understand the revenue part or any terms that they have committed the stadium authority to. And um, and certainly they've, they've not necessarily um, fully complied with the financial reporting that is required under section three point three. And I know it's, it's a ma, it's termed with a couple of days. Um, I want to say that because there, it's, it's within that section that should give the, the executive director, myself, information about are these money-losing events or have they overcommitted the stadium authority? And this is important because we have data now that shows that you know, seventy-five percent is, is the trend for money-losing events. Although they're aware of this provision and we have raised it several times, um, they have not, they have not fully complied. And, and right now there's nothing to report because there's no activities taking place for this fiscal year.
So, so that raises my question about college football. When we knew that this has been not been going on um, well, did we ever officially ask them for it? Like, did we raise a flag? This is wrong? Did we, we, did we challenge them or did we send them emails, uh, correspondence that they should not-
Absolutely, yes. Um, when, when I started, there, the, many of the college football games were already multi-year contracts. And um, and I walked in during a time when the agreements had already been signed for the college football playoffs. And um, I, I don't know if you are aware, but we worked very hard internally as a team with the stadium manager's agreement ultimately to assign that game because it had, I personally went with, to Atlanta to talk with officials there to understand what were the financials. And at that time, Atlanta was reporting having lost twelve million dollars on that event. And um, the stadium manager was forthcoming and saying this one's going to lose money too. And we, we assigned all of the expenses and um, and the revenue, obviously the whole event over to another third-party entity so that the stadium authority would not absorb losses. I had also, once I understood the financial losses for college football, um, particularly Pac-12, which, which loses um, multi-million dollars, I asked the same. I, I had asked uh, Mr. Guido if we could just assign it out similar to what we did with the CFP. Um, and at that time it had um, one more year to go and obviously it's, it's no longer occurring. So we have been monitoring and actively pursuing um, minimizing cost on, on college football.
And, and I do understand, uh, Diana, since you came over, but I'm talking about the historically, like twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. This is the one.
Yeah, I, I would say that in that time, when the execution of the multi-year agreements were in place, I can't speak for staff, but they, it could be that at that time, staff was either not monitoring those events, didn't know to monitor, or there was no disclosure. Because I can tell you that at the time, three point three, section three point three was not being practiced in terms of full disclosure of the events that were taking place. And that was something that I, along with the team have, have put in place. So it could have been, they just didn't know about it and, and how, for how many years um, the stadium manager had committed the stadium authority to multi-year contracts.
Right, okay, thank you. And uh, then I, I I read the letter which we got today as an addendum to the, today's meeting, basically. So I have some comments on that, uh, looking at what we have, like what stadium authority and the uh, HSNO, JS Hill held and the Manco. So my comment on that is there was some confidential information which we, it's in our prerogative because it's a win-win situation. If we as a stadium authority make money and the, whosoever is managing the stadium, if they consider something to be confidential, it should be held confidential. Was there a reason like we did not have some of the information confidential and we put it on a public domain? Like, why did we do that? And what, what is the theory behind that?
Brian, I think that's a question for you to answer.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer, um, board member Chahal. Um, we did review what, what's in the report for what should actually be confidential. Um, what's in, what's, that, that letter is full of a tremendous number of inaccuracies. Um, but uh, this, this issue of confidentiality just happens to be one of them. Um, this, what you have to understand is the manager is, is using the, the word confidentiality to hide what they're doing from us. And we don't consider anything that is a stadium authority record um, of uh, revenue and expense pu, of public money to be in any way confidential from us. So we understand the concept of, of uh, trade secret information, if you will, from a stub, from a Public Records Act standpoint, that if certain information were known publicly, that it would, you know, hurt our ability to make money or something like that. But if you look at what we, what is blanked out in, in, in much of the report, um, I think a lot of that information is blanked out. And I don't think that we have revealed anything that would hurt the stadium authority in terms of its ability to make money. I mean, it's, what, what's important for the board to recall and for the public to know is that the um, we've, the, the, the manager is currently claiming a two-point-seven million dollar loss. And we have terminated their management agreement. So it certainly is the official position of the stadium authority that we want somebody else to manage these non NFL events. Because obviously, we're not making money anyway. So it, it's hard to imagine how um, revelation of anything in this report would result in a worse situation, since what we're really trying to figure out is why are we losing so much money? And I think the public has a right to know why we're losing so much money, especially if part of the reason is there could be some self-dealing here, which it looks like there might be. So that's, that would be my comment on that. Um, and then I-
Can I just add that the, the, what is, what is confidential and not confidential is not an, a discretionary act that um, that the stadium manager can determine. As a public agency, we are guided by um, by laws around what documents are, are deemed confidential and not confidential. And so um, we do have to have that measure. And, and I would caution that if that were practiced within the city side that um, you know, we, we, people sometimes think their information is confidential and they don't like what they see when it goes public, but um, it is not a discretionary act, which is, which is what they're suggesting in their letter.
So if I understand, if I understand, is there a difference between our understanding and their understanding of what is confidential? Can we sort that out?
What, what, there's, there's definitely a difference between what they're claiming is confidential and what we consider to be confidential.
Okay, so where do we draw a line? Like, who decides what is confidential, what's not confidential?
Well, I think we as the public, these are our records, clearly, they're our records. And that, that, which means they are the public's records. So we go by our determination of whether, under the Public Records Act, there's a reason to not disclose them. And yes, there is, there are provisions on the public, under the Public Records Act to not disclose things like customer lists and trade secrets. And, and of course you have the balancing test as well. And so the balancing test would be, is the public's right to know um, outweighed? Does the public's right to know outweigh the um, the, the right of the private party to keep the information confidential, confidential? As we dig deeper into these records and, and, and learn more about how this, this, the, the, the the management company has been managing the public asset, it looks more and more like, like the public does have a right to know whether they've been mismanaging it in violation of the law to the tune of self-dealing, to the tune of uh, not, not adhering to the contract provision that which requires a separate set of books. I mean, this, we wouldn't even have these problems if, if they hadn't breached the contract by not keeping a separate set of books. I mean, we, we would, we would have known all along what, what the, what the revenue and expenses were. We would have had an ability to um, to determine for ourselves what, what is properly confidential and what is not properly confidential. But in the end, you're correct, it, it is the public entity's determination of what's confidential that matters, not theirs. They're just making the argument, they're just making the argument that, you know, maybe you won't make as much money if the public knows this information. So I'm having a hard time seeing that because we're losing so much money. It doesn't really seem to matter how much money, how much more money we could lose by revealing their mismanagement.
No, but uh, to counter that, Attorney Brian, let me put this thing, we were making money in twenty-four, fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. We did make money, but the things went south when we had a breach of trust between uh, both entities, basically.
I don't, I don't think that's true at all.
Can we have, that's, you, you, you read, uh, interesting point, um, board member, that we have had internal discussions with Tim around what his observations are based on the accounting and the period of time when revenue and expenditures are booked. I'd like for um, for Tim to, to comment a little bit because we did have these conversations internally about why was um, why was at one point early on the revenue was, was positive and it's, it's gone negative. And I know that oftentimes it's, it's attributed to um, inform, interesting topics, but I do think we should hear from Tim who um, as a forensic accountant and, and auditor has uh, and has looked at when these items are booked. I think there's an interesting pattern here.
Can I, can I, be, before we move on, I just wanted to make one point in answer to um, or a point that you raised, um, board member Chahal. And that is um, the agreement at section um, three point two of the first amendment to the management agreement um, gives a stadium manager full authority and discretion to determine which non NFL event, non NFL events, including tel, performances, telecast broadcasts or other transmission in and from the stadium or any part thereof shall be booked from time to time in accordance with the scheduling procedures. So we don't have any say as to how they book. So although I, I absolutely one hundred percent agree with you that it would make a lot more sense for us to know whether the stuff they're booking is going to be a loser or a, a um, a winner. Um, that's not the information they give us and they don't offer us the opportunity to um, to have any say in the matter as to what gets booked.
And, and to that, uh, Attorney Brian, I would say that, that, that means we signed the wrong contract. If we, if we gave all the authority to stadium manager to book any event without even considering us, that's not a good contract, actually.
I, I agree with you, it's not a good contract.
I would only, I would only remind, and I do want for Tim to make comments, I would only remind us as part of this conversation that the agreements have, um, I think it's in the preamble or, or in the earlier part of the agreements that they maximize, they have a charge of maximizing revenue. So what's interesting here in these, in these um, set of different data that Tim has provided is they have a charge of maximizing revenue. We know that their record is to book um, seventy-five percent money-losing events. And so where, and we know that there's um, there's incomplete accounting, I guess I'll call it. So where, where is the money being made and where is it going? Is it truly profitable and profitable for who and how? But I'll, I'll let Tim-
Yeah, and, and on that- Thank you, thank you, um, Executive Director. On that, it, in the very same patter, paragraph that talks about their exclusive right to do that, it requires them to use commercially reasonable effort, efforts. So we have, and, and that's, and that's one of the reasons that we're, that in fact, the, the board unanimously voted to terminate the agreement was that they were, that their judgment was they were not using commercially reasonable efforts.
Tim, can you just um, restate some of the comments that we had during our conversation around um, early year revenue?
Um, yes, Executive Director, if you wouldn't mind, I just want to make sure that, that I'm um, you know, recalling the conversation in which I am, you're talking about specifically. Um, can you clarify which ones?
There was, there, when we, when we talked about the early years of having revenue um, and general fund contributions at about two point five, there was conversation around um, the booking of revenue and expenditures. And um, and perhaps creating the optic that um, that it was doing better, that, that this entity or enterprise was doing better than in fact it actually was.
Sure. So when, anytime that we are engaging in a review of records or looking at financial performance um, and any type of, of forensic accounting analysis, uh, we'll always be identifying what risks are out there that we want to be looking out for. Um, and in this case, there were a couple of different risks that we were looking for that go, go in different directions. Um, so one of those risks would be that if the net revenues could be understated, that then of course the risk is that uh, there would be less um, transmitted to the SCSA, um, and to the city. Um, and that there could also be a financial benefit uh, to Manco um, by under-reporting items. We also identified as, as a risk that it could go the other way, that there may be um, for a wide variety of reasons and incentive to inflate figures, to make revenues look better and expenses uh, look lower than what they actually were. Um, so that is something that, that we have in mind as we're looking at the records and we haven't made any sort of of determination, um, you know, that, that the, that these risks are um, anything that did exist, but it's, anytime you're doing an accounting exercise like this, you need to identify the risks so that you know where to focus in your analysis and to know that if this is a risk, what procedures you need to put in place to see if that risk actually manifested um, into something. So one of the patterns that we did observe um, is that the- So one of the patterns that we did observe, um, is that the revenues, the net revenues were very consistent in the first three years with some steady increases year to year. Um, and then as we mentioned in our recommendations, that the subsequent three years should be looked at because there does appear to have been a fairly steep decline. And we would want to know what those reasons were. Um, because of the fact that again, there, there is, there are identifiable risks that we would want to be able to cross off. Um, and the, what seems to be a somewhat sudden and dramatic change, um, should be explained, um, given the circumstances. Does that make sense? Does that help?
That, that, uh, to me, like, uh, if I go back to the revenue, like we made, uh, fifteen million in twenty fifteen, ending year, ending twenty fifteen. We made eighty nine in, um, year ending sixteen. And then we made fifty one again in year ended seventeen. So that's not a pattern as such. I know it's a spike in sixteen and then back to around the same thing what we had in twenty fifteen. But if you look after that, eighteen nineteen, we deep dived. And I, I think one of the reasons for that, I, I'm, I'm happy to ask you what can be the reason for that steep decline. That's what I'm looking for as if you did analysis, what was the reason for that steep decline in eighteen nineteen, basically?
Sure. And that year was outside of the scope of our analysis. Uh, we were tasked with looking at the first three fiscal years. Uh, so we did not do any sort of analysis for the subsequent years, um, to try to account for what those differences were. Um, in terms of consistency, I understand what you're saying about, um, kind of the top line revenue numbers. Um, I, I would agree, there's not much of a pattern with those revenue numbers that, that changed significantly from year to year. Um, and I think like you said, it went from fifty one million to almost ninety million and then back to fifty two million. Um, but despite the revenues changing significantly from year to year, the net number stayed fairly consistent. It went from five point two to six, almost six point one, back to five point three. Um, you know, so, so that's something that we certainly, uh, wanted to, to look into. Like why did there seem to be fluctuation in that top line number? But yet the bottom line number stayed very consistent. Um, again, look, wanting to look into something does not necessarily mean that anything untoward has happened. But just from an accounting perspective, it's doing proper due diligence to make sure that you have a good explanation for that. But then subsequently after these first three years, um, and especially in the most recent two years from what we understand. And this is just gleaned from looking at the financial statements on the SCSA website. Um, the net numbers fell significantly, um, these last two years. Um, so we would just want to, I, I think it would be a worthwhile exercise to do, um, exactly the type of analysis that you're, you are, um, kind of alluding towards, which is to look at those subsequent three years and find out what changed. Are we looking at the, um, do then, how, how much of the number of events change versus what are the type of events, um, look like versus what was performance of each event? So are we talking about just a number of events fall off, um, for whatever reason? Or are we looking at there was a similar number of events, but maybe the mix was different and there were fewer, you know, concerts and soccer matches, um, and WWE, um, that came through that made a lot of money and more of the money losing events that came through that maybe had a lot of revenue, uh, but a lot of expenses associated with it. Um, or are we seeing kind of a drop off in, um, in specific events? Maybe there's artists that are booked that there's just not as much interest in. Um, maybe it's an effect where a stadium is, you know, shiny and new when it opens and garners a lot of excitement and then after a few years it could wear off. Um, those are the, the impacts that we would want to look into. So I wouldn't have a, an answer for it. But I, I agree that it makes sense for somebody to do the exercise of looking into that and to try to figure out what was it that changed?
And thank you for that comments like, and to, to, if you ask my comments on that, I think our relations with the, as a business partner, I think our relations dive down. And that, that is one of the major reasons like, uh, why we are not making money in the last of few of these years. And we need to, our trust went down, our business relationship went down. And those are some of the issues probably. Uh, like economical issues separate, but these are the, I think these are the one of the, some of the fundamental issues which have contributed to that, uh, effect basically down the line. And, uh, to that, my last question to you, Tim. You did the audit for whatever, I know you didn't get hundred percent information. You did whatever best you could with the, all the information you had. Did you find any glaring fraudulent issues during this audit? I know you did both accounting audit and you also put in a, um, part of it. You also did the analytics of the performance audit. But I want to ask you, uh, did you find any glaring fraudulent thing? You found that, okay, this was, oh, this was really bad and this, this is a fraudulent, um, financial act. Did you find anything like that?
Uh, based on the records that were provided, um, no, I would say that there's nothing that I would point to, to say that there's, you know, clear, uh, fraud and here's an example of it. And that certainly would, would have been a finding in our report if there was something at this point. Um, however, I'd put the caveat in there that with not sufficient documentation, um, to fully analyze and confirm all of the results that have been reported, then I wouldn't be able to make, um, an affirmative, uh, statement that there isn't any. Um, but I would say, you know, certainly no, nothing at this point, um, that was found. And one quick clarification I, I want to make just to, you know, ma- make sure that everything is, is clear about the type of analysis we performed. Um, I think sometimes the word audit is used, um, in kind of an informal manner. And, you know, audit does just mean to review records essentially. But as we made clear in the report, um, we did not perform an audit as it's defined by, uh, generally accepted auditing standards. What we're doing is a forensic analysis of the records and we're guided by the, um, consulting statements on consulting services, um, from the AICPA. So that's kind of less for, for the information of, of everybody here and more for, the AICPA is, is very, um, strict about what's called specifically an audit. So I just want to be clear that, that, um, you know, the engagement we performed, there's KPMG that's doing an audit. We're doing a separate type of analysis that's looking, um, in more detail and doing a different type of work than an audit would be.
Okay, thank you. And I, last thing I want to say, your recommendations, I fully agree with most of your recommendations. And specifically like if we can have a accounting package where we can see transparently a live information being put in by, uh, Manco, our management and our stadium authority staff at the city, that would be perfectly fine. That would make our life so much easier, basically. And, uh, I specifically noted the revenue and expenses should not be netted. I agree with that. And, uh, some of the other thing is like, uh, breakup of, uh, details what you needed. And going forward, we should have more transparency into the accounting. Uh, that's for sure. And, and direct involvement of SCSA to oversee the perform, uh, all the accounting package and how we can make it happen, that would basically determine how we go forward on this one. Okay? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Your questions, thank you.
Okay, um, Authority Member Davis, followed by O'Neal.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I really have to say this to City, um, Manager and the City Attorney that I think that Council, uh, Authority Member Chahal needs to be, um, schooled in the contracts that were given and signed back in twenty ten as the same way that Mayor Gilmore and Councilmember O'Neal and I were schooled in. Because the questions that he asked were, um, quite, they were answered in the marketing agreement. That was, I, I think the City Manager explained that and what number that was. And, and the fact that we were supposed to get a marketing analysis and who was going to be booked, um, in, within this stadium. We were not allowed to have details because they said it was confidential. And I believe at the time, the, or the, um, City Manager said, well, we're not going to say anything. We just want to know what you're doing and, you know, what it would look like to the stadium authority. And they refused to give us that information. And to the point where Jimmy Curio, one of the meetings he did attend, and I questioned him on that. And he said clearly that we had to lose money to make money. And I just could not believe that he said that because we were, my questions were that there were so many money losing, um, non NFL events that how are we supposed to make money? And that was his answer. And we asked him diligently every time at every stadium authority meeting. Could you please give us a marketing plan, a strategy? Who do you want to put in here? What is this going to look like? Because they assured us when we had the contracts done that we would be able to make money. We own the stadium. They would have the use of the stadium for the NFL events. But the non NFL events under their management, we, the city would make money. And that did not happen. So from what I understand, maybe some of the council members and some of the council elect members would benefit in understanding these contracts and some of the things that have been stated out in the media and in, in some of our stadium authority meetings that we are not the bad guys here. And, um, for Councilmember Chahal, Stadium Authority Member Chahal to say that the relationship went downhill. The relationship was never a fair relationship because they didn't give us information that we needed. And we are responsible to the residents of the City of Santa Clara for owning the stadium. So I find you to be a little naive when you make these statements in these meetings that you're not really understanding what's going on here. And you're given, okay, a forensic audit. He's telling you that there are anomalies. He's telling you that he wants to understand more. But it was the stadium people, Larry McNeil and save yourself, uh, Scott Sabantino that shut him off from information in September of twenty twenty. And he clearly had a timeline that he was asking for information. They were being gracious in giving him information, but then they decided not to. That's not our fault, that's their fault. So we're just trying to get down and drill down to what is beneficial for the stadium authority to make money. What is going to, um, better the relationship? And, and finally just get the information that we have been requesting since twenty fourteen. So I'm not understand, this is not rocket science people. They have to have records. They run a business, it's professional. So why do we have all this stuff that's going on continuously? Makes no sense to me whatsoever. And, uh, I'm just kind of, it just bothers me that those, some of those statements were made. But Tim, I just want to get to you right now because I have some questions that when I read your report, yes, I thought it was great. I think that what you did was explain it very clearly what has transpired during some of these end statements that we get in March. Because our fiscal year runs different from the stadium fiscal year. So when you came upon the seven hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars that went to operation and janitorial, could you elaborate on any of that? Did you find anything that could pinpoint? Because you brought up the, you brought up the word, the word true up. And that is, and I understand that completely because that always happens in business. So can you pinpoint anything or elaborate that amount of money for operations and janitorial?
Um, so what we did find with that amount was that, um, we, we could divvy some of it out between ticketed events and special events. Uh, and I'm, I'm scrolling through my report to, um, clarify what those were. So for the ticketed events, there was about five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, um, of additional operations, janitorial and maintenance expenses. Um, three hundred and thirty three thousand of that was for salaries and benefits. Ninety five thousand was for office expenses, um, that then included dues and subscriptions, phone supplies, travel and entertainment, um, and then have another miscellaneous category. And eighty, almost eighty, uh, six thousand dollars was a promotion payment true up, um, related to the Mexico versus Chile soccer event, um, held in September of that, September of twenty fourteen. Um, so those were the general expenses. I think some additional questions and digging that we would want to understand is why some of those were classified the way they were like a promotion payment related to a soccer match. Um, we're not entirely sure why that would have been booked to operations, janitorial and maintenance. Um, but you know, maybe there could be a, a, an explanation for why it was called a promotion payment, but actually related to, you know, operations or maintenance in, in some way. Um, so we were able to drill down and into that detail. They did provide those amounts, but ultimately we're kind of left with those, um, same kinds of questions that we had before. We can identify the transactions that occurred, um, but we would still want to know, um, whether they were ultimately appropriate, um, and accurate to do.
Okay, next question. Were you able to find, uh, correlate the dates of an event, um, with the dates of some of these transactions? Were you able to figure out that maybe it could apply to a certain specific event?
Um, yes, we did go through some of that exercise. And what we tried to do, it was a question that we had asked Manco with, since the accounting data relied or, um, resided on their systems, we asked if they would be able to put together what, um, in the accounting world, we would call, uh, bridge entries that would essentially say, here's the unadjusted amounts, which would be the sum of all of these, um, different events. And then we would see these different entries, uh, that the true ups, the end of the year adjustments, whatever, um, however you want to refer to them. We would see to the extent that they related to specific events, where they would be booked. Um, they did indicate early on that they would try to do that. And then later on in the process, um, I can't recall if they asked us to do it instead or if we just decided to do it because we wanted to, to get that task done. Um, so we took it upon ourselves to do it. Um, but we did go through that process of trying to tie out expenses and revenues to certain events to the extent we could. Um, and there were events that we, we were able to take some of those, um, overall true up amounts and find the events that they, um, should have been allocated to. And it wasn't, it didn't require so much like digging, like looking for, say, the date of the, um, invoice and trying to match it up to an event so much as a lot of the supporting documentation for those end of the year adjustments indicated that they were, that there were events, um, that they were tied to. So I think that with some additional legwork, um, that we may be able to tie some other expenses to specific events. But for the most part, I would say the majority of those additional expenses were salary and payroll expenses, which I think would likely not relate to specific events.
Okay.
And one other thing, I'll, I'm sorry. One other thing I'll mention, you specifically, um, referred to the seven hundred and sixty seven thousand dollar figure. Um, that was in the twenty fifteen detail, right? Um, what we found when we dug into that and when we got the additional detail from Manco is that, um, there were entries that actually tied out to different accounts. So we actually found that the operations, janitorial and maintenance went up not by the seven sixty seven that the initial batch of documents, um, suggested, but actually went up by about one point three million. Uh, but then the parking expense went down by about two hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars. So the net of those, um, got us pretty close, or actually got us back down to what the full adjustment was for that year. Um, and there was another adjustment in addition to that seven sixty seven. I'm kind of jumping around with, with the numbers. Hopefully I'm not, not jumping too quickly. Um, we had initially identified from the initial batch of information that there was two hundred and twenty nine thousand of miscellaneous expenses that were booked. Um, we, that actually went away. Um, there's nothing there. So, but we couldn't tie those specific transactions back to the amounts that did get booked to the operations, janitorial and maintenance. So it was kind of a strange set of events where we got back to the same net number, but with different numbers added up to it. So that was something else we wanted to dig into with them is, um, how is the net number the same despite having different transactions that kind of summed up to that amount?
So my next question is, it seems that there are counting practices, they bundle. So my next question is, it seems that their accounting practices, they bundle things together and then. You're trying to decipher how this is all done? I mean, is that fair to say?
Um, yeah, I would say that that is fair. Um, and I would say that. This gets to some of the recommendations that we had where um, there were items that were netted together. That um, would be put on one line item, for example, the, the partner reimbursement. Or the partner payments and guarantees would often be comprised of uh, both revenue and expense items. And what is, what Manco was, would do at the end of an event. Um, is they would determine, uh, they would look at all the revenues that came in. And the agreement that was made with the promoter as far as how those would be shared. And then there were different expenses and, and different revenue items that would kind of go both ways. So. One event might have an agreement to pay rent um, to, to the SCSA to have the event there. Um, and then there would also be reimbursements for various expenses, maybe some turf replacement um, reimbursement. Maybe some labor reimbursement, for example. And then there might also be other charges. Now the promoter might take care of certain things, but then charge the SCSA for those. So a lot of those items would then be kind of trued up or reconciled at the end of an event. Um, and there would be typically a one or two page sheet. That would start with maybe ticket sales and then make a lot of adjustments for these various revenue and expense items. And get to a net number to remit to the promoter, typically to the promoter. Sometimes the promoter might owe the SCSA at the end of the day. But the financial statements would only reflect that partner payment. Um, or guarantee item on the P and L for the specific event. So you wouldn't be able to see how much rent was charged, what payroll was reimbursed, all of those different items. Because they were just bundled up together, as you put it, and the net number shown.
Okay, um, next question is you bought up the commission salaries and things of that nature. And in one of the exhibits, there was something with Mina and I believe that would be Michael Mina's restaurant. So was there, were you able to figure out what commissions were paid? And that comes out of non NFL side money? Is that where, can you elaborate on that a little bit then?
You know, that is one that um, I would want to refer back to um. To my detail or to that exhibit. Do you happen to have the exhibit number handy? Um, I want to make sure I don't misspeak about that.
Um, it was, I think it was 37 and it was Michael Mina's and it had a lot of commissions paid out. A lot of the stuff was redacted. I don't know if you redacted it or they redacted it. I wasn't really sure what it was about. It was, it just said commissions and then the, the amounts that were paid. And so to me, when you were speaking um, very clearly about what inadequate and inadequate. Um, source of resource of backup would be to me when that, when I looked at that, that is inadequate to me. Because it doesn't tell me anything. It just says Mina's commissions. So I was just trying to understand what that was about and how you uncovered that.
Um, right, and I'm going to, so I am looking at that exhibit. I want to refer back to the reference in, in the report. Um, to make sure um, that I'm properly refreshing my memory here about what that um. Exhibit was. So those were related to, um, those are fees and commissions related to team building um, events. Um, which I understand those events to be kind of the, the typical like corporate team building. Um, getting groups from a, a business, a company together to do activities and, and you know, kind of foster morale and camaraderie. Um, and I don't recall from looking at this exhibit right now. Whether these were commissions that were being paid to Mina or from Mina. It says, let's see, it says a fees and commissions expense in my report. I'm referring to my report. Um. Fees and commissions expense increased by 445,000. So that would be um, commissions, I believe. Um, that this would be um, commissions that were paid to the vendor, um, Michael Mina. But I would, I want to be careful about that because I, I don't have enough of that detail off the top of my head. To recall exactly um, how that was booked. Um, so I just want to be careful, but it's something I could certainly look into and, and get back to you. Um, to get a fuller answer um, about that. But in general, that documentation, that exhibit. Um, was a support that was provided uh, for. Commissions and, or for um, additional special events fees. Um, the majority of those expenses had to do with commissions.
I just, I want to add that this um. This is important because it gets to council, uh, to board member Shahal's question and, and how Tim answered it. Um, we know that we have asked for the lease agreement for Michael Mina before. And uh, to understand better what the terms were. Um, and we know that there is um. Discussion or talk out there around the um, 49ers having a partnership. Uh, or ownership of, uh, or some kind of financial interest in Michael Mina. And so. Um, that would, that could be a conflict of interest. And so because Tim doesn't know that in terms of. Um, how he answered the, the question to board member Shahal. Um, it's, it's purely based on, you know, just the set of information that you had on screen and the PDFs. But this type of information that I just shared would cause for, for us to hand it over to, to the attorney's office to say, review it from. That perspective, if we had access to that lease agreement, which we have been asking for, for this very reason. So the invoice raises more questions.
Okay, and, and Tim, to get back to KPMG. And so it was, it was clarified that they are the official auditor. Of what's going on. And when you found these anomalies, I, I, you were asked the question if you contacted them. And you said that you um, had emailed them and hadn't had a response. But I was just curious of, since you have been terminated by the 49ers to not continue down your path. Or what is the next uh, step on this? Are you going, are we able to rehire you? Um, I, I'm not sure if you're going to even answer that. I, I think the city manager might have to answer that. What, what are the next steps that you have been terminated? And, and how do we resolve the questions that I'm sure are going to be asked by more council members coming forward? So um, city manager, sorry, uh, stadium authority manager, could you answer that question, please?
So um, I just want to clarify that the consultant or Tim has not been terminated by the stadium authority. There is um, reference in the letter that the 49ers submitted. That um, their recommendation is that um, that we terminate the, the consultant engagement. Ultimately, that's up to the board. Um, from my professional perspective. I think there are um, sufficient items that we should engage with Tim to follow up on. And continue to try to get the answers and better understand um, the information as to, to how is, how, what's the financial reporting? Going into the um, new financial management system, I think understanding errors that have occurred. Um, accounting practices that need to be improved. I think this um, this engagement really informs making sure that we, we get this right. Going into an investment of a new finance, financial management system. And certainly Tim's work has been very informative and, and. From a professional perspective, I just don't see a reason why the board would have an interest. In not having that information to inform going forward into the future.
Okay, so I'm just hope, I, I thank you for the clarification because I know he was terminated by the 49ers. We haven't terminated him. But I, I believe that going forward for Tim, it might be advantageous. To work with someone from KPMG who did audit. These years, um, 2014, 15, 16, 17. And I know that we did make a lot of money off of the WrestleMania and I know that so there were other ones that did. Were, you know, less performing. But at the same time, I think that maybe they might have some insight or maybe they have some records. That the 49ers were, you know, working with them. And might be helpful for Tim and his team to go forward. To uh, get some more information. Um, the other question I had was there were a couple of um, I can't remember exhibit numbers, Tim. I'm very sorry.
That's okay.
That had redactions done so that you couldn't see um, deposits, withdrawals and what was going on. Were you able or K, maybe KPMG might be able to have those uh, bank statements? Um, that might help you? Is that a possibility?
Um, so we do have unredacted copies of all the records. Um, but we did um, go through and uh, try to be very conservative about redacting. Anything that, that seemed like it might be um, considered confidential. So obviously things like, you know, names of individuals that were tied to pay. Um, and then uh, any kind of banking information like that. So we did have access to and copies of the unredacted information, uh, but we just tried to be careful about that when we made it into an exhibit.
Okay, and I think my last question, you brought up the, the turf on the, on the floor. They have replaced that turf so many times, but I was wondering, I cannot remember. If the replacement of the turf was supposed to be under NFL expenses and not non NFL. Cause I would like to have some clarity on that because there were times where that field was changed. And I was hoping that we did not occur that expense to have that changed. So um, could you add that to your list?
Yes, definitely. And we did note that there was um, non NFL event turf replacement. That would occur during the NFL season because of course there, there would be non NFL events that would take place during those periods of time. Uh, but that we had that same question of wanting to, to ensure that that replacement was related to the non NFL event. Um, and not to anything else. Uh, we'll certainly make sure that that's highlighted um, in the event that we do in the additional work.
Okay, and then also when you were speaking about accounting and practices. They have broken down in years ticketed events and special events. Um, you said that it was hard because they, they kind of changed their methodology from year to year. Was it, in your scope of services, are we able to break some of that apart and figure out what was ticketed and what was a special event? Because the things that I could think of would be ticketed would be like the concerts and um, you know, the, the cross and, and WrestleMania. The special events are the things that they hold within the stadium that we are supposed to receive some type of revenue from. But we were never really given a list of what they were. And how often they were. And that goes back to um, depreciation of. Purchases of televisions and the media equipment and stuff of that nature. So. The other thing is that when we have the concerts, they also have a green room. And the, they're also given special privileges and whatnot. So would that also be considered? Because they're using equipment, say Beyonce was there and she decided she wanted to go in and watch um, the Housewives show or whatever. Would that be part of the um, depreciation where she would have that setup? Type of thing. I'm just using that as an example. I don't know what she did when she was there. But um, I'm just, I'm just saying, would that be considered maybe a special event type of depreciation?
Um, that would be considered uh, a ticketed event depreciation, but I would say that for the depreciation. Um, from what we saw, Manco did not break it out specifically by this is special event depreciation. And this is ticketed event depreciation. It was just kind of the global 90% of, of these items will be um, allocated to non NFL events in general. So that would, you know, in essence, cover those types of, of expenses like you mentioned. Um, but they, they aren't tied to anything specific, but I think that, that would be the logic that Manco is using. Um, in that allocation, when it explained that allocation. Um, was that for the most part, these, essentially they were just saying that these event or these items were not being used for NFL events. So therefore it makes sense to allocate the majority of them to non NFL events.
Okay, and then hopefully this will be my last question. You had a miscellaneous column on page 11. Wa- was there any, could you elaborate on that? Was, were you able to figure out what miscellaneous meant?
Um, yes, and so we, we broke out the miscellaneous expenses. Um, for that particular year on page 11, they were comprised of audio visual services. Um, guest services, uh, logistics that was provided um, by Nelson, um, temporary staffing agency, I believe. Um, and are you talking, there is a miscellaneous item underneath miscellaneous expenses. I, maybe that's the one that you're talking about. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Um, so I believe that we, we do have the detail um, for those expenses. Uh, as far as how they were recorded, I would need to look back to my detailed workbook to see um, what those items were. Specifically, I don't recall off the top of my head um, what, what those items were. Um, but we did note, this is one of the, so this is just for special events. Um, by the way, these, these numbers we're looking at. Um, and for miscellaneous, if we added up the miscellaneous items for each separate event. It totaled up to 27,847. Um, but if we looked at the P and Ls that Manco had hardcoded, as I was describing earlier. Where they had all of the P and Ls for each event, but then instead of summing them up. The numbers are hardcoded for the total. And hardcoded means they're just typed in, like a number is typed in. And we can't figure out what's being added up to get to that figure. Um, so they recorded about $94,000 more in miscellaneous expenses. Um, than what showed up in the detail. And I don't know. That we do have the, the enough information to determine what that is. I would need to look back. I, I don't want to say. One way or the other that we do or don't have that. I don't recall off the top of my head what accounts for that $94,000 difference. I believe that that was an item that we had um, requested from Manco more information on and asked them what accounted for these differences.
Okay, well, I got a chuckle at one of the exhibits and I can't remember what it was, but $20,000 for snow cones really put me over the edge. So. I um, as I read this report, you did, you did a great job. I, I commend you. I applaud you for everything that you've done. Um, I think you can feel our frustration and um, we, we just want the answers. That's all we're looking for. And we're hoping that you're going to be able to get them and I'm glad that you are still working for us. And that maybe this will come to fruition and I'm hoping that um, the people that are listening to this understand that. We don't make this stuff up. I mean, you're, you're giving us fact and you're, you're explaining some of these things, but. At the same time, it's when we read these things, we just get more and more upset and. We just don't understand because to us, it's a simple business. And it should be easy to just hand over information and why all the secrecy and no transparency is beyond us. But. Uh, thank you. I am going to be signing off now and Tim, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, council member O'Neal.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so this, my, I, I'm going to ask some questions and I'm, I'm also going to give a little history. Uh, on, on my uh, recollections, which is, um, I have a pretty good memory, but. So I just wanted to start off and maybe, I'm not sure if this question best goes to Tim. Or to um, Ken or Deanna. But so it sounds, seems like, and I want to tie this into. Uh, uh, an item that the stadium authority dealt with about six weeks ago. Uh, was it during the course of this in uh, consulting engagement? That the stadium authority became aware of the fact that the um, management company. Had not set up a separate financial accounting system. Uh, and that the financial records had been commingled. Cause I bring this up because I know when some people question some of the, the, um, you know, issues that I have raised. It was about six weeks ago, if we all recall, that, and I, I thought, why are we paying for this? That the stadium authority authorized staff to purchase a license for a financial. Management system and we authorized payment to a consultant to set up. A separate set of financial books for the uh, for, for Levi's Stadium. And so whether it's Ken or Deanna or Tim. Did we come to the full realization that there was not a separate accounting system during the course of this engagement?
No, we, we knew um, and um. I, I can only speak to it for myself. When I started and, and as we started looking at Measure J. Um, by early 2018, I knew that there was a separate financial management that, that it was a commingled management system. Partly because we were asking for our digital information. And wanting to understand, in, in the absence of documentation, wanting to understand the, just the financial. Picture of, of the stadium authority and they clarified that it would be very difficult. To um, pull out the ma, the stadium authority's information because it was in their larger accounting system. And we actually had a couple of meetings around how do we create then a warehouse? Um, an electronic warehouse of how we could access to information, which is how we got down to getting. A download of their, of the general ledger for the stadium. a download of their, of the general ledger for the Stadium Authority, which is what obviously started this whole engagement. So we knew that there was, that they had commingled and not stuck with the letter of the management agreement of having separate books. And that's what led us to go into the request for proposals process and ultimately for the board to make an award.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that, Deanna. So Tim, would that be a common practice? That for two entities like this and with the contracts that were attached as addenda to the, to your report, that that a lot of the, apparently, most of the financial data would have been commingled?
No, I would say that that's not a common practice. And I would say that it's not a common practice because it leads to the difficulties that I think you helped to describe. I think that it's unusual for a manager, an operation, to mix their accounting with the accounting of the operation that they're managing, especially. Now, I would say, you know, you might see in some small family run businesses, there could be loose accounting like that, a lot of commingling between entities. I wouldn't say that that's proper accounting practice, but I would say in terms of it being common. But in terms of there being like separate independent parties, but one of those are these books are on the books of another without an easy way to segregate them, I would say, no, that's, that's very unusual.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so I just wanted to bring that up because I know that there, I know Board Member Shahal was asking, you know, asking, making some comments that perhaps that we had not been doing, you know, and historically, that there had not been due diligence from perhaps the, the Stadium Board and to a lesser degree, staff, because ultimately, the board is who is responsible to the residents of Santa Clara. So some of us were asking, I go back to the first time when we got the first, very first financial report from the Stadium Authority, which was largely at that point prepared by Manco. And I believe that I voted no on that. And maybe for the first couple of times because there was so little data that it's like I cannot even you know, say yes or no to this because it's, it's, it's so flimsy in terms of a structure that's over a billion dollar structure, particularly one that is financed with public monies. So I, I want to make sure that, that people understand that and that in terms of some of these other questions that have come up, part of the reason why, you know, when we were talking about the scope of the audit, the reason why these three years are here is that after a few years of asking and perhaps when the makeup of the council changed somewhat, we did have, even though I know our, our partners at the 49ers referred to audit in quotes with the engagement that we had with Harvey Rose. But we had a time period for that engagement that they were looking at. And then we were going to go back and do the prior three years. What's happened is now this whole thing, this whole exercise has turned into something that's taking longer than it took to build the stadium. And that's why we don't have the subsequent years because now, you know, I'm going to recommend that we, when I get around to making a motion, that we do include that scope. And as some of you recall, at the time, I was the one that wrote the initial audit scope for Harvey Rose because of the concerns that I had, in part knowing that, I mean, having been in a multi-billion dollar international business when the dot com bubble burst and when Sarbanes-Oxley and a lot of these other accounting practices came into to existence, when I was seeing what was going on here. And in particular, and after reading Tim's report, if this, you know, were an SEC controlled or an entity that the Securities and Exchange Commission had oversight on, I think there would be a lot of problem here. Just even like the talk, the discussion about revenue recognition. I mean, that would never fly in, you know, any company that I know of around here about how that was handled. And, you know, that, and there's been continuing, ongoing work in some of those areas. So you know, it's very distressing to see what has happened. And I know Board Member Shahal used to put the word fraud out there. And I know everybody would be extremely hesitant to, to bring up that word because there, as I'm sure he realizes, that there are extralegal burdens associated with the use of that word. And even though sometimes our partners don't hesitate with some of the words that they throw around, I think we are trying to be careful and recognize that at the very least, I, you know, I think what we, what some of us have been trying to work on for almost eight years is to make sure that we are bringing state of the art, you know, we're not a business, but state of the art accounting or business practices to the operation of this entity and our oversight there of that. So, and you know, and one of the things also like, I wanted also to echo a little bit of what Board Member Davis had to say about the marketing plan. There were times when we did try to enter into discussions about that. And I, you know, there was the infamous episode where I brought up about, maybe we should look at doing things like having cricket or different kinds of event and was basically kind of dismissed in a kind of demeaning way. And, and, and Council or Board Member Davis also referred to the Scott Sabatino, who I'm sure is listening right now, when I asked some questions about data on some of these events and he mumbled something. And when I asked him to repeat himself, he said, "We are trying to save you from yourselves." So some of the attitude has been is that the public is not entitled to have the public's data. And that has, you know, in discussions that I had, and I've spoken to many people about this with Mr. Guido, with whom I had several very cordial conversations. And, you know, and you've all heard me say this, that just as the members of the board and our staff have a fiduciary responsibility, so do all the members of the stadium management company. And I think unfortunately, they oftentimes have forgotten that. So there, from day one, and I also want to talk about a little bit about that, the, what I, what some of you may recall that I used to refer to as the magic $5 million number. In the first few years of operation, when we would get financial reports, these numbers would pop up and I'd go, oh, there's the $5 million again. There was so little data, it just, it almost seemed, it was getting almost a little comical. And as we started pushing to get more data, we started getting, I remember speaking with our former Finance Director Angie and now can't, you know, like as we were getting more detail, I said, okay, it's getting better. We're getting more detail. It's taking years. It's because it's like we're trying to build the, the Golden Gate Bridge with toothpicks here. And that, you know, the, in terms of what we are, the, how we have been blocked in court every time that we have tried to get records that should rightfully belong to us. And that's partially, I was curious about getting clarification about the, the, the financial systems because all this, these, these hoops that we've had to jump through, like go to a little room in the stadium and there you will find a laptop. And on that laptop will be data, but you won't be able to download it or make a copy of it. You can come and look at it. It's like, you know, you're, you're going into, you know, getting the secrets of the secret handshake for the Sigma Chi fraternity or something. So I mean, some of that has just been completely unacceptable. And then when I read this report and, and once again, Council, Board Member Davis touched on it, when I read stuff about hardcoded in data in spreadsheets, you know, like, I mean, that always sends up back in my days and I was not a finance person. But when you're looking at stuff and you've got data that you basically, somebody's plugged in a number and you don't have a way to track it. Or there's not, you know, it's not linked to other data, that kind of sends up some alarms. And the whole issue is, one of the other contracts that we've had to enter into in the past couple of months has been to allow the Executive Director to enter into, issue an RFP and enter it into a contract so that the stadium builder licenses could be digitized. So that isn't covered here, but I mean, another aspect, another contract, and I agree with Board Member Shahal. A lot of these contracts, if I, you know, I've often said that if I had put forward some of these contracts in my professional career as a contracts manager and negotiator, I probably would have been terminated. But there are still obligations that are clear. And they are legal obligations that have not been fulfilled. So whether the contracts are bad or not, there are still things that, that have to be done. And that, so it's no, you know, you know, you could say, and most of the people that very, you know, many of these agreements were entered into even before Chair Gilmore was even on the council. So a lot of, you know, it's like the vast majority of us weren't around when these were entered into. But, you know, we're trying to make sure that we at least can capture the best that we can for the residents of this city. And it was some of the issue about the, the money. As I've done research on Stadia over the years, particularly ones that are owned and built by a public entities, I was rather taken aback when I read some commentary that said that frequently, for the first few years, they will make money. And actually, the number, like $5 million a year, was even in one of the articles that I read on the internet from one of the ex, you know, quote unquote, experts. And I thought, oh, my gosh. And then they said, very often after that, you will start seeing, the public entity will start experiencing losses. It's almost like for the first few years, it's to, you know, to assuage any kind of doubts that maybe people in the community have. But I mean, I, I do think we can still find a way to make money on this, but we, it has to be more of a realization that this is an entity, an entity that was constructed and put into existence to benefit the public, above all, to benefit the public and to provide resources to them and financial revenues to to help the businesses and the residents and those who come to Santa Clara, not one particular business. So some of the things that I wanted to ask, Tim, so when you were looking through all of this, did you come across, did you, you know, were there things like a financial accounting manual that state all these policies? I think about, you know, the, where I worked and other things, you know, that we had very detailed policies about how revenue was recognized, how you accounted for things, how depreciation was going to be handled. Where you had things like charts of accounts, you know, so it showed, you know, so that you weren't going to be bundling you know, amounts together. Did you see evidence that there are detailed financial policies, that there are things like charts of accounts? That there are consistent methodology? Because partially what blew my mind when I read this report, it seemed like we had like a, you know, ping pong ball bouncing all over the room in terms of what was happening from day to day practically, let alone event to event. So did you find evidence of those, those policies, those structures that, that any of us who have had any experience in how a multimillion dollar business is operated, that those existed?
We did not, in the course of our analysis, see that. But I would also caveat that by saying that that would, would be somewhat outside of the scope of what we're looking at. So I don't believe we specifically asked for a manual for it. We focused on, was looking at the records that existed to see if it's supported, however they were recorded. But certainly, as part of our recommendations, whether it's, it's an accounting policy or some other guide, we would certainly recommend that there be consistent policies in place.
Because it would appear that what we're seeing in this data is that it's very unlikely that if, if those policies exist, that they would not appear to be being followed on a, on a, the kind of basis that we would expect for someone that we contract with to provide these services. So I also want to talk about some of the, a little bit about, you know, what we have done in the past and why the stadium maybe isn't performing. So I agree with your comments about the shiny new penny. And I had conversations along those lines with members of the Manco staff, that they acknowledged that. And some of the challenges with how many acts are there out there that, these days, that can fill a venue as big as Levi's Stadium? You know, it's, it's, I would say that there, you know, even though we had Justin Bieber was booked for the stadium. We all know with COVID, that got canceled. And my understanding is that that has been rebooked. Who knows if it'll be held. But rather than having it at a venue that can hold in excess of 50,000 ticket holders, my understanding is it's been rebooked for the SAP Arena, which seats about 18,000. So, and Justin Bieber, I would say, is one of the, you know, biggest draws probably in the concert realm currently. So I mean, so I think that that's what, that's why the idea of having the marketing plan, which I think the, the plan that they did come up with, at least for the special events, and it may be that we may have to recognize that where we are going to have more success is with a lot more special events and of, you know, other types of sporting events that might be more popular with the public. And I also want to comment about some of the, our control about the, by the time we got enough data to find out how much money we were losing on those college football games, they were already done. They had been, you know, some of them had happened two or three years in the past. It was taking us that long to find out what was going on. And, you know, one of the things that I do feel good about the, an area that I made a contribution was, you know, the way that we approached the Super Bowl bid and the fact that we were, we were going to be fully reimbursed for expenses that the city incurred in supporting that event. And thank you, Executive Director Santana and our staff for making sure that we follow that with the football college championships because once again, we weren't necessarily going to see the nexus of a lot of money from hotels or restaurants by people coming in to watch a college football game. And the expectation that public entities, and I feel sorry for Atlanta and a lot of these other cities that have taken on those huge multimillion dollar subsidies. Like, you know, I, I, as I said, I feel for them and I'm very glad that Santa Clara did not put that burden on our city finances to do that for the college football championships or for the, the Super Bowl. And I'm sure we ended up eating a lot of costs that we didn't know about without even knowing it. And once again, because of the lack of transparency in, in, in the accounting practices. And so I'm, I'm hoping that we will, you know, we'll get the new financial accounting system installed, we'll get a lot of the records transferred over that we can, I would still, I don't think we ever did the audit of the construction costs of the stadium, which I know was not in your scope, Tim, but that's something that's kind of always has bothered me for a long time. And so if, if we could, if the staff could bring up the slide that Tim had with his recommendations. It was near the end of his presentation. He had a series of recommendations. It wasn't the accept the report, was it, was it within his PowerPoint? Presentation and it was one of the, and it was a series of, Tim, I don't know if you remember the slide number. It was near the, you had a series of recommendations.
Yeah, I can pull that up. It would start on.
Wasn't sure if you had it or if our staff had it. Thank you.
Slide 29. Would you like me to share my screen?
Yes, please.
Sure thing. And I'll try to do a better job than the first time I tried to share my screen. Give me just one second. Sorry, I almost got it up here. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So, um, I know that we still have, uh, Board Member Watanabe to, I think she wanted to speak. I'm not sure she, um, but I'll go ahead and make a motion that, um, I would like, uh, to, to make the motion that the stadium authority authorized the executive director to, um, uh, make, uh, do an, an appropriate amendment to the agreement with JS held uh, so that we can continue, um, the work on getting, um, uh, the, uh, the financial records, particularly for the years 2016 and the years that after 2017. And to continue to try to drill down. And so here are some of the, um, the recommendations to look at the accounting policies, um, to, to do more of the analytical analysis. Um, and you know, the, uh, improvements to maintaining and organizing the accounting records, the revenue categories. You know, so I basically want to capture that we would, and perhaps the staff can help me and we, you know, you would write a scope, but basically that we encompass the recommendations from JS held in, in drafting amendment to extend their engagement.
Are you talking about, um, Authority Member O'Neil? You said 2016 and the years after 2017.
Yes.
The three years that, that, um, that Tim proposed.
Yes, yes, because we did the, we, we, we still have some gaps in the first three years, but we did that. That was because of the, well, it was not included in the Harvey Rose review. And now we have had several years pass, um, subsequently. So did I hear the executive director also?
No, I seconded your motion.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you, uh, Board Member Davis.
I, I think it's, I'm, I'm taking that, uh, the, it as sufficiently broad to capture the, um, the loose ends that Tim has raised within his recommendations to address those as well as to pick up additional fiscal years.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes my comments for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so there's motion and a second on that. So, um, we have Authority Member Watanabe, you're next.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, Board Member O'Neil, what you just said is a perfect example of why you need to be on this council. Because of the institutional knowledge that you carry with you and how you were able to just elaborate so much information about this asset. It, uh, all I can say is, um, you are definitely going to be missed a lot. So thank.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so, uh, I have been making a lot of notes while I've been listening to people talk here. And, uh, Tim, I read your report, all of it, and I made a lot of notes. But I'm not going to go through everything because then we're going to be here all night long. And we've already been here a good while already, so, um, but one thing I want to point out, and, and I actually had to, to laugh when I saw this in your report, when you talked about the soccer matches. And, and I'm going to share a little bit of history as well because, um, you mentioned in the report, um, that the tickets, uh, uh, the, the tickets for the 2015 match were significantly lower compared to the 2014 match. And so I just want to give you a little bit of history there and why that happened. Because in 2014, that was actually the very, very first, um, event at Levi's Stadium. It was the, the soccer match. And believe it or not, it almost caused an international incident because we had the mayor of Limerick visiting because San Clara was signing off on a, a sister cities relationship um, at the international conference in San Jose that very same weekend. And the mayor of Limerick was here to sign off with the then mayor. And, um, he went, he was invited to go to the soccer match at Levi's Stadium because of course soccer is a big sport in Ireland. And, um, he, he left and didn't tell anybody and we almost, we thought we lost him. So anyway, as, as I, President of Sister Cities at that time, I remember the event very well. I know, uh, Board Member Davis remembers it very well because we were, uh, frantically looking for the, the mayor of Limerick that night. And it was the very first incident, uh, the very first, uh, event at Levi's Stadium. And that's why it was sold out and, um, and did so well and, and why, uh, the attendance was, um, had declined in, in 2015. So I probably told you more than you wanted to know, but anyway, uh, that'll give you some, uh, background in between 2014 and 2015. Um, I have, I have a lot of questions, but, um, first, uh, I want to point out, uh, you, um, there was talk about the, the first three years and the nine concerts. And, uh, that the income, uh, the income actually for those five, uh, nine concerts was $5,643,843. That was for nine concerts. The average for those nine concerts, each concert was $511,258 per concert, which is a big difference. And when we think about all the different, uh, artists that have come and performed in Santa Clara, I know many of us have been very surprised at the, um, the net income that was derived from, uh, from some of those, um, performers. Um, and which is what has caused a lot of concern and frankly, uh, why the mayor um, brought about, uh, doing an audit and hire and, uh, as a council, we hired, uh, Harvey Rose to come in and do an audit and, and come up with some practices to make sure that, um, the city was receiving the revenue uh, that it was supposed to be receiving from these events. Um, so, uh, let me see, um, okay, I have a question, uh, about the, um, the soccer. Not, not the soccer, the hockey. It was the hockey match and the wrestling. Um, there was a notation that a partner reimbursement was recorded as a negative expense totaling And then for the wrestling event, uh, same thing, there was a negative expense totaling $2,666,280. Could you please explain what a negative expense is and how that affected, uh, our bottom line, basically?
Sure. Um, so a negative expense, um, in essence can be seen as revenue. Um, so in this case, what it represents, um, based on our review of the records was that, um, for the, the hockey, um, game as well as the wrestling match, the promoters were responsible for reimbursing, um, the SCSA for certain expenses. Uh, but this gets back to the issue that I had talked about earlier where instead of showing, um, kind of said, uh, what the gross amounts were for each expense and what the revenue was that the partner contributed, um, these various line items got lumped together into one payment. Um, and was recorded as, um, in this case, instead of being booked as revenue, um, it was booked as a negative expense. So it has the same effect on the net income at the end of the day. It essentially lowers, um, expenses. Um, and in, in some way, you, you could, I could see, um, somebody making a justification for putting a reimbursement in an expense line because it, it does reduce your expenses in essence, your net expenses. Uh, but it also represents revenue that's coming in. And what it, what it makes difficult is looking at what expenses were reimbursed um, at the end of the day. So what, what were the actual expenses and what were the actual revenues? So by lumping these reimbursements together and recording it as a negative expense, we lose a lot of that, um, detail that makes it difficult to compare event to event.
Exactly. Okay, okay. Thank you for that explanation. And again, um, you know, when, uh, I know there's been a lot of discussion about the lumping the expenses together and, um, the information that we don't see. Uh, but, um, I know one of my concerns regarding especially, um, with payroll, payroll being lumped in there as well and not being broken down is that we have had issues regarding prevailing wage. And I don't know if, um, if, uh, I know you've mentioned staff, but I mean, are there stadium employees um, that, you know, their, um, uh, their pay for working at events, is that lumped in there too? And therefore it's not broken down and we can't see if they were being paid prevailing wage as is supposed to be done since the stadium is a, is a, uh, public asset and a public entity. I don't know if you can answer that question, Tim.
I, I, um, so we, there is, uh, paid data, um, that was included for, for the allocations, um, for mostly for the allocations or is not. Um, I'm trying to think about the direct labor that was for specific events. But I would have to go back and review the data again to see if there was enough information that one could use that to analyze, um, and determine if prevailing wages were being paid. But I'm not able to answer that question, um, at this moment without looking more at the data.
Sure, of course. And it's probably more information that you need. Um, so, uh, let me ask you, I saw Teen Challenge appear, uh, as a line item on many of the statements. What, what is Teen Challenge? Were you able to figure that out?
I did a quick, um, look in to see what it was. I understand that it's a faith-based organization, um, that I believe, you know, works with teenagers. I'm not sure exactly what, what they do or how it tied into the SCSA. Um, but that's the, that's a very high level view of what I understand about Teen Challenge.
I see. Okay, thank you very much. Um, then, um, I will say, I mean, from just looking through each, uh, statement, um, and the profit and loss statements, um, there are definitely a lot of discrepancies, um, in the expenses from year to year. And, um, you know, the fact that, um, uh, like Ticketmaster, for instance, revenue sharing increased. Why? We lost money, but Ticketmaster was making a heck of a lot more money than we were at one point. I think it said it was, they, they got 10% of the revenue. Their, their total amount that they received was 10% of the revenue from the event, which to me is just astronomical.
And let me, um, speak really quickly to that because the, that revenue share was actually revenue to the SCSA. So it wasn't a fee being paid to Ticketmaster, but it was, um, essentially Ticketmaster paying kind of like a commission to the SCSA um, for selling those tickets though. So that 10% was to the benefit of the SCSA. But, um, we would still want to understand why that revenue share varied so much. Um, and again, there, there may be
Right.
perfectly reasonable explanations for it, but those are the sorts of analytics that we, that we run. And when anomalies, um, pop up, we at least want to understand to make sure that, um, that it makes sense.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank, and thank you for explaining that. Um, and then my last, uh, question, uh, would be regarding, uh, KPMG. Um, I know they've been brought up quite a bit as well. Uh, and I was wondering if based on the report that you've been able to share with us tonight and the information that you've been able to, um, get, get a hold of, are you going to be sharing uh, this information with KPMG to use in their reports going forward?
Um, you know, I think that would be up to the SCSA, um, to determine what that, uh, would look like. I would highly recommend it. I think that, um, KPMG obviously has a lot of institutional knowledge, having worked with the stadium authority for a long time. Um, so I think it would make perfect sense for them to, uh, to be involved. Um, any information, I, I would expect them to have access to most, if not all of these records. Um, but if not, then certainly would be willing to, to share that with them and, and collaborate um, to the extent, um, possible. I think that would make a lot of sense.
Okay, good. No, I do too. Um, uh, that being said, should we make that part of the motion or just make it as a recommendation? Um, going forward that, um, Tim's informa, uh, Tim's report is shared and going forward, any other information is shared with KPMG. Mayor, do you have any thoughts or Chair, do you have any thoughts?
I think we could just, you know, say that going forward without making it part of the motion because there, these are two different types of audits, so.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, certainly we should share. But I, I don't, I don't know, um, I don't think it needs to be part of the motion, but.
Okay. Okay. Uh, that's all I have again, um, as has been said by everybody else, thank you so much, Tim, uh, for your, um, hard work. And I hope that going forward that you will be able to get the information that you need so that we can definitely, uh, we can all get answers and, and confirmation and, and, um, basically, um, just the things that we have felt inside or felt about things that have been happening regarding this relationship and how the stadium is being, has been operated and that, um, people will be held accountable and, um, and that the relationship will change because, um, uh, based on what you're sharing with us, it, it shows that things need to change. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Authority Member Watanabe. Um, uh, Executive Director, you had some comments before we move on?
I do, um, I, I know that we've been at this for a couple of hours and I am just, uh, the issue of hard coding and, um, the stadium manager creating the source documents is one that I want to touch on a little bit because I'm mindful of the letter that they sent. Um, and Tim's work and the importance of Tim's work that he has provided. However, um, would it really, if Tim, if you could just, let's talk about the Taylor Swift um, issue and concern that was made in the letter about, um, the audit findings. And this is why it's important to have accurate record keeping as well as accurate and, um, and valid source documents because it does lead to, um, to information that's, and how it's interpreted and analyzed. And Tim, if you could just touch on that a little bit so that, um, we address that concern that was expressed by the 49ers.
Uh, yes, so I've read that, um, that paragraph in the letter a few times to try to understand exactly what they're saying. At first, when I read it, it sounded what, and I'll kind of summarize, um, what they're saying. Um, actually, it's short, I'll read the whole thing. I think that, that'll help. It says that, um, once one penetrates the tables and figures of Mr. Gellahan's report, it becomes clear that Mr. Gellahan is woefully unsuited to conduct any sort of audit of stadium managers' work or to recommend improvements to stadium managers' accounting practices. For example, example, Mr. Gellahan says he would like to investigate the 2015 Taylor Swift concerts, quote, "in light of reports that demand was weak for the second night and many comp tickets were distributed," uh, unquote. But those reports related to the 2018 Taylor Swift concerts, one wonders how far Mr. Gellahan would have proceeded in his investigation before realizing that there were two different Taylor Swift concerts three years apart. Um, so at first, when I read that, what I thought they were saying was that within my calculations, I had analyzed the 2018 Taylor Swift concerts and not the 2015, uh, Taylor Swift concerts. Um, so I went back and checked the data and saw that the information I relied upon for 2015, um, were the P and Ls that, uh, Manco had provided for the 2015 Taylor Swift concerts. Um, there were two, um, concerts, I believe on August 14th and 15th of 2015. Um, and so at, at first I thought that perhaps they, they had made a mistake and they maybe thought that I was referring to the wrong, or I put in data for the wrong year. Uh, but then as I reread it, um, the, the sentence that says, "but those reports related to the 2018 Taylor Swift concerts." Um, I don't know exactly what they're referring to when they say those reports. The financial reports that we relied upon did relate to the 2015 concert. They may be reporting, or they may be referring to my sentence where I said, um, "in light of reports that demand was weak for the second night." So they may be saying that actually that the reports about weak demand was for the second night of the 2018 Taylor Swift concerts versus the 2015 Taylor Swift concerts. Um, overall, I'm not sure what point they're making because, um, as I discussed before, analytics is about uh, finding, um, discrepancies and running down the answers for those. So I am referring to the 2015, um, concerts. Um, to the extent that perhaps there were not reports about, um, there being weak demand for the second night. That doesn't impact what the analytics are, um, which is doing an evaluation and analysis of the figures. Um, there was also a footnote in that paragraph that said, in fact, SCSA's entire narrative about the Taylor Swift concerts is misleading. The 2015 SCSA's entire narrative about the Taylor Swift concerts is misleading. The twenty fifteen concerts were profitable. Um I don't make any um in my report, I did not make any reference. To the uh to Taylor Swift as in terms of whether or not it was profitable. I showed. What the net incomes were, um and it did generate a profit. So again, I I'm. At first, when I read it, I thought they were saying I I had mixed up the twenty eighteen and twenty fifteen financial statements, which. Um it would have been embarrassing if I had done that, but I verified that that's not the case. So I'm really not sure what they're what they're getting at, but um it doesn't impact the analysis um in any way.
Okay, um thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Uh are you Executive Director? Any more comments on that item?
I would just, um at some point, we should just ask Tim if he wants to comment to any of the other. Statements in the letter, but I know that you may have questions as well.
Chair. Yeah, I do. Um but I have uh council members that I guess want to come for the second time. So I'll go ahead. I I want to get to my comments, but I'll wait. I'll let, I'll defer to my council members again. Um let me see here. We have council, Authority Member Chahal and then Davis and then Hardy. All right, uh uh Chahal, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to respond to um Board Member Debbie Davis comments about me schooling me, basically. So I I came to the council in twenty eighteen. And Board Member Debbie Davis was on council since twenty twelve. As a board member, like it's our fiduciary duty, like. She was trying to blame the executive director earlier or they gave us this information, they gave that. Like, the buck stops at the board. It like we cannot delegate or we cannot delegate our responsibility. We can delegate work, but we cannot delegate our responsibility. So I take a uh objection to that, like uh and at the end of a day. We all are working for the residents and if we don't have an income from the stadium. We, the residents, are the losers, basically. And how come it took like it it is? I can't accept it that it took five to six years to find out that college. Um games are not making uh money. And that's the responsibility of our board assets. Like if if we did not notice that thing during the process. Then we are not adhering to our fiduciary duties. We cannot. Say, oh, because the executive director at that time was not helping us. Or the staff was not helping us, that didn't, no, that doesn't stop. Like, executive director report to us, we have to make sure we we do as a board what we need to do. And uh. We we are the authority, basically, uh on this one. And. I hope uh uh. Board Member Davis understand that, like uh. He he we cannot blame anybody else other than the board because we are the final authority on that. And uh. If we knew the contracts are not good. What we should have done, we should have sat with the Forty Niners or sat with the Manco. Hey, these are contracts are not good. We in- inherited those contracts. Then we should have resolved to improve those contracts versus like. What will happen now? What is happening right now, basically? We are working under those contracts. We are spending money on the court and. Who is losing? Basically, our residents are losing the in the long run, basically. So those are my comments on that. And I do have a comment for uh Executive Director Deanna. Didn't we pass a two-year extension for JS Health? Like, I know. Uh Board Member Theresa O'Neill mentioned that we extend, we engage with JS Health. And uh to do the uh three more years, but aren't we already in contract with the JS Health for the? Um similar type of work right now?
We we did recently bring forward some action for um for the board to approve and it did. However, um what the recommendations are do it do break away from the original scope. Um part of looking at um some of the follow-up information. Um it would require additional scope as well as what has already been referenced in the motion, additional fiscal years. And so that's why when I um restated count, Board Member O'Neill's motion. I um I stated that it was broader and that it included additional fiscal years and additional scope as referenced in the recommendations. So an amendment would be appropriate.
Okay, okay. So that's an amendment, basically. Okay. So my question on that is like, uh as you know, that. Our consultant JS Health or Stadium Authority is not getting any data because of the pending lawsuit. In this scenario, what can, even if we do a contract with this amendment? What can JS Health do when they will not have any access till the time it gets resolved in the court? When they will not have any access to the data, what good is that contract, uh signing that contract with JS Health, basically?
Um I I need to say something about that.
Go ahead, uh City Attorney, uh Attorney, Stadium Authority Attorney.
Yeah, I mean, it's not true that we're not getting any data from them. We are getting data from them. So um. You know, I think it's very important that we that we have someone available to 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 look at whatever data we get. Um the other, the other, the other thing I need to um clarify for the record, because I was here when um. When originally, we were trying to get the exact information that that you said the board has responsibility for, which is to know. Which which events are losses. Um the that was the very first thing I did when I got here was um I I. Made sure that we countersued them. What they they sued us first. And they tried to prevent us from getting any information. So this entire exercise by the by the management company has been to prevent the public from knowing what they've been doing. And the first thing we did was countersue them to get the records, which we've been trying to do for the last four years. And we've been getting the records in dribs and drabs. And the people that have always wanted to shut down any kind of audit were former council members. Such as Council Member Mahan, Council Member um uh Caserta and Council Member um. Uh. One of the other couns- that I can't remember. I can't, his name, his name escapes me at this. Colstat, thank you. And they were constantly trying to shut it down and and the former police chief came in and 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 had a had tirade. Against the council and particularly the mayor in particular for for doing the first audit. So what you've had was um basically council members who were sellouts to the Forty Niners. Who were who were basically just trying to thwart um the public getting any information. And you know, that, so it's 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 absolutely not true that Council Member Davis or. Council Member, Council Member Watanabe or Council Member um O'Neill or the mayor was ever trying. To not exercise their their fiscal duty or public public responsibility. In getting this information to the public of how the the stadium was being managed. And it was always the Forty Niners who were trying to prevent the public from knowing this information. And 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 myself and 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 the executive director have been. Every day trying to get this information from them. And it's they who are not giving the information to the public because they don't want the public to understand. That they are taking the public's money. That's what's going on here. And if you had a property manager that that won't tell you what he's been doing or she's been doing with with your money. In managing an asset that's over a billion dollars, you know something bad is going on here. That's all there is to it. Thank you.
Look, my comment on that is, I I know you're trying to blame other people on that, but.
It's it's, you can go back and see them vote. You can go back and see them vote to shut down the audit. I'm not blaming them. You you can, you can look yourself.
I'm not, uh first of all, I'm not only talking about the audit. I'm talking about before the audit. The audits start in twenty eighteen. The um Board Member Davis was on the council since twenty.
No, I'm I'm talking about, I'm talking about the original Harvey Rose audit.
Yes, I'm I'm talking about before that.
Yes, and 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 the lawsuit was in twenty seventeen when I first got here.
And and I'm talking before.
And 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 why don't you ask, why don't you ask Mayor, Mayor? Mayor Matthews, who ran off in the middle of the night, why he didn't look into this? That's the, those are the people you should be asking. You shouldn't be asking these council members.
Uh that's my prerogative. I can ask him on personal basis, but I I. To ask the current council member who is trying to school me on this thing right now. That's the reason I'm trying to ask. If.
All right.
Uh uh if Board Member Davis was on since twenty twelve. Like, we started much later, like all these things, so many things for twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. These things happened under her watch. And that was a, and that's what I'm claiming, that it was her fiduciary duty.
And she exercised, and she exercised her fiduciary duty. She she's, she's the, the the council voted. The council voted, this uh this all started falling apart when they wanted to do the rent reset, okay? That's what happened. They wanted to cut the facility rent by five million dollars. The Forty Niners did. And they had folks on the inside that were willing to do that. And then when 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 these council members figured out that that's what they were trying to do, they stopped it. They exercised their fiduciary duty. But but you have to understand that 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 the that the administration at the time was hiding information from them. I'm telling you the truth. This is, this is just simply the truth. It it's it's not fair to to accuse these council members. Of not exercising their fiduciary duty. That's that's all I'm saying.
And and what I'm saying is rent reset came later on. But the other events for twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, they were already holding. How come we could not push our administration to get that information like?
Because 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 the administration was hiding that information from the council.
Then whose responsibility? Like we.
Well, that when they found out that was happening, they they put a stop to it. They got rid of Julio. They got rid of ru- of of Ren.
If my staff holding some information from me as a fiduciary.
They got rid of them.
No, no, what I'm saying is, what happened, why, why it took so long? Why it took it so five?
Because they, because because they had the, because the the people who, the council members who sold out had the votes to keep them.
Did did? Was there a motion, any motion that was raised by a council member who were not agreeing to those things?
They didn't even, you know, I I I think we should probably have the discussion offline, but I can, I can cer- certainly inform you what the status of things was when I got here. I was just, I was just a resident. I didn't know anything about any of this.
I'm I'm talking about even before that, multiple years before that.
Right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in right now. I'm gonna go to Count, uh Authority Member O'Neill and. Uh O'Neill Davis and I have been here since two thousand and twelve. We have the history and 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 let me tell you. Our history is, hold on a second. Okay, thank you. Our history is very well documented. Um Authority Member Chahal, very well documented, but I'm gonna go to uh Authority Member O'Neill. To talk and I'll make some comments on the on the end as well because I think those are some. Very interesting questions he's asking and and we'll be happy to give you the background, but I'm telling you. You you can just go back because it was, it was very well documented in in numerous places. Authority Member O'Neill?
Thank you, Chair. So uh Board Member Chahal. As I said, from the first time we got a financial report. For the Stadium Authority, I was raising questions. Um and you know, and at that point, people were still kind of giddy about the stadium. You know, you know, the mayor said that I was always a stadium skeptic or whatever. I was. When, you know, one of the people, few people that wasn't involved in either campaign, so I was neutral on the whole situation. But. As part of what I'm gonna say next week is, to get anything done, to make anything happen. You have to have four votes. You have to have people to stand behind you and you have to have. A ways to make an impression on the public. Um. One of the things that when when, as as it became more clear to some of us on the council, that something was not right. That, as I said, when I kept asking questions, like, where's this magic five million dollar number coming from? Where's some of this stuff? It doesn't make sense. As we started to ask questions, one of the things that happened was. We were being kind of made fun of by um. A majority of the council members that we didn't understand. That we didn't understand the contracts, that we didn't understand how things worked. And so um it was even one of the council members that uh the um Authority Council mentioned. Said something like, you take those girls and you go, you go teach them about those contracts. We were spoken to in a very demeaning way. There was an element, I'll say it, of misogyny in how our opinions were treated. Um when the the episode where the um, there was almost. An abdication of the public's right to have the the um. The youth soccer park, the way that that was handled. And I'll say, at that time, there was a minority of the mayor, Board Member Davis and myself. And when we couldn't stop the majority from. And a former council member, I'll, you you can guess which one, when he said, don't worry, public. And as he pointed to the council conference room, when I go in that back room, I'll make a good deal for you. And so the three of us said, we are not going to participate. We kind of folded our arms across our chests and sat there. And the then mayor. With his political instincts realized, oops, this isn't good. I have a room full of hundreds of people. Who are not happy. I have three council members who are not going to participate in this closed session. This may not go very well. And so he rightfully. Brought up something, says, okay, I think we ought to postpone this to get some more information and it never came back. But of those times when we were asking questions and being, our opinions being denigrated. Uh we weren't able to really stop things until. Finally, a couple more staff people, it said something to some of us on the council. And when we got one more vote, when the council dynamic changed. And we were then able to get those questions to be asked. If you don't have four votes on a seven-member board. You can, and you can go back and watch the recordings of those meetings. You can say all you want. You can cry and I, and we did fiduciary responsibility. But if you don't, the the authority, the the power and all those people who are, you know, the new council members who have talked about wanting the power. The power is not in any one individual. It is in the collective body. And in order to do that, you've got to have four votes. So some of us tried from the very beginning. Even while I was asking questions while the stadium was being built and I was being ignored. So please, don't say that I didn't try to exert my fiduciary responsibility. To the members of this community from the first day I became a council member. I don't appreciate that. Thank you.
And and if I may, you did not point out anything to me. Let me be very, uh Board Member Theresa O'Neill.
Well, be informed before you say things then.
No.
Excuse me for getting angry, but be informed before you make accusations.
I was pointing out to Board Member Debbie Davis, who picked on me. I am picking, I am responding to Board Member Debbie Davis's comments. I I was not commenting about what you did or you did not do. Yeah, I was commenting on Board Member Debbie Davis's comments. She should have made a judicious comment about me too. Before she talked about it.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm gonna go to Council Authority Member Davis, followed by Hardy, and then I'd like to make some comments. Go ahead, Authority Member Davis.
Oh, thank you. Um so Board Member Chahal, you commented. And and you made it very clear that it was on our watch and the relationship was our fault. And so that basically pushed my buttons and. Council Member O'Neill was very clear as to what happened to us. And we tried desperately to stop what was going on. And for you to accuse us and not having the institutional knowledge to make your statements. Yes, I'm gonna come back at you because you were wrong. You didn't understand, you felt that you were gonna just make a blanket statement and accuse us of not doing our job. And and burning a relationship or whatever you said that we, you know, we harmed a relation. I can't remember your exact words, but anyway. It was not nice. And the fact that what Teresa had explained to you was. The majority of the council at that time had control. And we knew what was wrong. We heard what was wrong. We tried to change.
And we knew what was wrong. We heard what was wrong. We tried to change it and we did. Three of us did. And when we turned it around, all we wanted was the right answers. Where was the money going? How were we going to run this stadium effectively and what was going to happen? So, I'm sorry if you feel you've been picked on, but don't come out with a statement and blame us for something that we did not do on our watch. And whether I was elected in twenty twelve has nothing to do with it. It was, I think, when the stadium opened in twenty fourteen and it was a year later when things started to come to light and we were going into a Super Bowl. So I think you better learn or understand or go back as, um, Board Member O'Neill has said to you, watch the videotapes, go and read the contracts and see why we've been fighting as hard as we have to make sure that we do our fiduciary duty to the public because we own the stadium. So if you feel insulted, I, I'm sorry, but you started it and I'm gonna finish it. So this is my last council meeting with you and I, I hope to God that you do the right thing going forward. Because it has not been easy and making policy has not been easy and fighting people has not been easy. But I gotta tell you, Council Member O'Neill basically told you, this is how it is and that's how it was. And she did not lie to you. She told you the truth. And I think you should take up the city attorney's offer and sit down with him so he can explain a lot of things to you. Because from your calendar, you've been visiting with the forty Niners for the last three months. So I'm really curious as to what they're telling you, or maybe I don't, I don't even know what you're talking about. But I don't think it's fair that you come to this meeting and you say it's our fault. You are absolutely wrong. So those are my comments and thank you, Council Member O'Neill. I know you're leaving also. But I think that there's a long road ahead of these people and they better wake up and smell the coffee and do the right thing. So that's what I have to say, Mayor. Thank you very much for the time.
Okay, Vice Chair Hardy.
Thank you. I had a quick question mostly for the maker of the motion because what we have on the, on, on our docket was just to accept the, um, the report. And her report, her, um, motion goes a little bit further. What I want to make certain I understand is because we were given some really good recommendations, which I want to see implemented and I have no problem with that. I'm just wondering what expanding the scope on what happened in the past is going to change because these recommendations are really good and we wouldn't be having some of the problems we're having if, um, these basic accounting practices were taken care of. My big thought is how can we make certain, certain these are implemented? Maybe that question's for the maker of the motion, maybe it's for the city attorney, maybe it's for the manager.
Yeah, I would like to respond to that. Um, in terms of the action, um, there is an accept the report. And at the end of the recommendation, there is possible action by the stadium board. Because we could not anticipate what, um, what action the board would take after hearing this large volume of facts. We did leave it open and, um, and with the ability for the board to take action on what it heard. So there, there is sufficient, um, notice and information about possible action and, and acceptance of the recommendations in the report as well as a contract amendment. As I said earlier, the, uh, we're, we're in the process of establishing a new, separate standalone financial management system. And the lessons from the past absolutely inform the corrective action that needs to take place going forward. Um, and the scope, expanding the scope helps inform additional actions that we'll want to get right so that we don't find ourselves in this place four or five years later. And so I do think that, um, that the, the comments that have come up today about giving this report to KPMG is excellent. I think it's a great starting place. And I also think that, um, additional review as well as the, the, the information we've learned is going to directly inform how we build a new financial standalone system going forward and making sure that the accounting practices that the stadium manager is using, that has a lot of open ends and, and inappropriate, actions needs to be corrected before they are, um, connected to the larger financial management system. So that's, that's the strategy of this work is that it's, um, it's actually aligning very well to make sure that we don't put garbage into, um, the new financial management system.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that clarification.
Okay, um, Council Authority Member Chahal, your hand's still up?
Yes, Chair. I just wanna respond to Board Member Davis' comments, like. Yes, I, I did meet, um, um, forty Niners and I am ready to meet anybody to make sure we improve a toxic relationship and we improve uh, our general fund money for our residents. And that's my goal. I, I will do anything I can to make sure we make some money for our residents. Period. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, all right, um, let me go back here. Okay, wow, I almost forgot what I wanted to say. It's been so long, so let me, let me start here. I've, I think I've shortened my questions because, just because of the lateness of the hour, but I just wanted to say, thank you to Tim for that report. I think it's, it's very eye-opening and I, I just want to say when I looked at that report, it was really, um, I, it wasn't so much looking at, uh, uh, the revenue that was coming in because I think it's very clear that when you look at all the events for these years that, that have come up, there has been a lot of money that is coming in through that building and that stadium. A lot of money, millions and millions of dollars, especially in the beginning when there are so many concerts and events. But as, uh, as Authority Member O'Neill said, you know, one of the reasons we started questioning was because no matter how many events there were, there was always this magic five million dollar number. So it didn't matter whether there was ten concerts or two concerts. It was always the same. And, um, so what my concern is, is all the expenses. And I don't think, I, I know we, we've spent some time on it, but I, I don't think anybody really that has any sort of logical mind can look at this report and not scratch their head and say, what the heck kind of accounting is going on at that stadium? There is just things that make no sense. There's no consistencies. There's no underlying documentation. There's no third-party, uh, reports, supporting documentation that support a lot of the, um, a lot of the, the numbers that are, that are out there. Um, I, I just wrote a few things down. You know, team building events of over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, uh, ticket master fees that are high in some areas and not charged at all in, in other areas. There's absolutely no consistency there. Um, Taylor Swift, uh, you know, tickets sold, but, but, um, you know, number, numbers don't add up. Um, some low ticket prices, but, uh, you know, no, no revenue sharing from Ticketmaster. A lot of lost money on parking and it didn't matter how many people were at the event. We would lose money on parking. I don't know how that's possible to lose money on parking when there's not a lot of parking in that event and the, and the amount of money they were charging for parking. Um, uh, it's, it's apparent the, the events that make the most money are soccer. The soccer events, those made, uh, the most money, uh, followed by concerts. Um, in fact, and, and the smaller events, which, which made the most money. But there's so many of these line item revenue issues that are, that are not explained. Like this partner reimbursements, um, uh, you know, low attendance for the college football game but had the highest catering expenses. So we lost money on those events, but they had, you know, ginormous catering expenses. Uh, an interesting one I, I saw was the Foster Farms Bowl. Um, there was a, a nearly a half a million dollars for, um, a bowl committee expense that wasn't in two thousand and sixteen, but not in the first two years. Who in that, where's this bowl committee? And I know in two thousand and sixteen, the forty Niner owners, uh, purchased the rights to the Foster Farm Bowl. So then they added a, a half a million dollar, uh, bowl committee expense. That's not explained. Um, uh, again, Monster Jam parking lot, uh, lost revenue. Um, for the hockey game, had the highest game day, uh, staff of, of over seven hundred thousand for that. And some kind of partner reimbursement that's not, um, all these partner reimbursements that aren't quite identified and quite, um, detailed. Uh, these partner payments and, and, and there was one, uh, partner payment guarantee. I, I think it was on, um, Exhibit thirty-two, which I found interesting and I know the, um, this, the Stadium Authority Attorney brought this up. But it talked about, uh, ticket revenue. I'm gonna ask Tim this, on ticket revenue and it deducted possessory, uh, money that was taken out for possessory interest tax, credit card commission, rent and labor. So I was most concerned about the possessory interest tax for non-NFL events being charged as part of the ticket price. Is, am I reading this correctly?
So, uh, in that case, um, the possessory interest tax was deducted from what the SCSA eventually paid to the promoter. So it was for the benefit of the SCSA. It was essentially saying that the promoter was gonna pay that, um, amount. Um, so it reduced the amount that was paid to them. But, um, I would say I'm not too familiar with the possessory interest tax and how that should be, um, Charles. I understand that there's been, um, some motions, um, a lot of activity about, uh, about that, uh, item. Um, but it's not anything that we delved into a lot of detail.
Yeah, I, it's just, I, I'm curious and I, I'd like to see more information on that because the, um, the forty Niners, um, owners have asked and, and received a massive, uh, uh, possessory interest tax appeal. They want an appeal saying that they, they do not have any benefit from non-NFL events. And so they did receive, you know, hun- lots of millions of dollars back, um, from public agencies because they did, um, appeal their, the possessory interest tax. But it looks like, but they're charging it as part of the non-NFL ticket prices. So yeah, that's something definitely we need to, to look into because that, that is, uh, something that, yeah, doesn't make any sense. Um, individual events had credit card charges, you know? Normally they're two and a half percent, but they range from five and a half to nineteen percent for credit card charges. Um, and then of course, the forty Niners, uh, uh, terminated communications with you, I guess in September. Um, but, but I think looking at all this, there's all kinds of bonus monies, like hundreds of thousands of dollars of bonuses and commissions and all kinds of things paid, um, without any backup information or, or any of that. And, and I thought as part of the management fee for ManCo, uh, we did have a, a, a performance, um, level two where they would make more money, you know, based on, on their performance there. But I didn't realize all, who is getting all these bonuses and commissions and other things. And I think it was, I think it was Authority Member Davis that said about twenty thousand dollars for snow cones. I think it was, it was you, Debbie, that mentioned that. I loved the lunch with the team at Hooters in Dallas and, uh, paying for someone's moving expenses and relocation costs from Los Angeles. I love that that's become part of our, our fees as well. Um, buying NFL polo shirts and other things and, and, and then some NFL event rentals charged to the stadium authorities. So I think that, you know, based upon all the conversations that we've had today, there is some very, very disturbing expenses here. Very disturbing that, that need to be evaluated. And, you know, and I know of, you know, eventually we're gonna get all the information. I, I think what's, what's frustrating for us and, and probably the reason Authority Member Chahal, your, some of your comments weren't taken very well is that for those of us who have been here for a while and have been fighting, trying to get this information from the, um, from ManCo for, for so many years. Uh, I don't think you realize that we started with the, the, the budget that came to the stadium authority, you know, way back when from the beginning was one page. We received a one-page budget. And it was, uh, Teresa, Debbie and I that said, why, why are we getting one page? We need some backup information. And that's when the majority of the council thought that we needed, um, some education. And, and we spent hours and hours with, with our staff at the time, a different mayor, different city manager, different, everybody, different attorney, different finance director. Everyone, attorneys that, 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 um, uh, that worked on the, uh, the agreements that, that helped us with the agreements in the beginning to go over all of this information. Because although the contracts are not exactly favorable to the stadium authority, there are a lot of things in there that are favorable to the stadium authority in terms of the information that is supposed to be supplied to the stadium authority, including a marketing plan that we're supposed to approve every year to give us some say in what happens at the stadium. And we've never had a marketing plan that's been acceptable, uh, to the stadium authority. There has been, we've, we've tried to have, um, uh, discussions and, and that with, with ManCo, but they have not, you know, they, they say, oh, they don't like the way they're treated. No, the, the fact is, everyone needs to wake up. The fact is, they don't want to give us the information. They don't. And you can see why. If anybody looks at this report and you can see the discrepancies and the unprofessionalism in this report and the fact that, um, our public money is being spent in ways that are absurd and, and undocumented. Um, I can see why they don't want to show the information. And so it, 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 it's, it's not by us not trying to get this information. We've been trying to get it for years. And, and again, it's well documented. What do we get in return? We get personal attacks, tons and tons and tons of personal attacks, including the letter that just came in, of course, right before the stadium authority meeting today, attacking the auditor for being unprofessional, right? Well, who else did they attack? The last auditor, Harvey Rose. Who do they attack? Everyone on the council that, and the stadium authority that is asking questions. So instead of providing the information, how easy would it be to provide this information to the stadium authority? How many hours, how much, how many millions of dollars can be saved if they just did what they said they were supposed to do, what they contractually obligated themselves to do? But instead they're not. They're spending, you know, three million dollars to buy a city council. They're, they're attacking everyone. They're, they're, you know, going to the press saying, oh, you know, our feelings are hurt because they're asking us for this information and, and we have, you know, even Authority Members saying, oh, you know, the problem is we're not treating them well and we need to sit down with them. Well, Authority Member Chahal, you've been on the council for two years. I haven't, I don't see any more information coming forward. So what have you done? You know, in, in that respect, to get this information for us? They're not gonna give you the information. I think, you know, that approach is, is so naive. They're not gonna give the information because you know why? They're making millions and millions of dollars and we're not. And I think that if we had, and all we've ever wanted these last years is to have the stadium professionally managed, professionally managed by a professional. It's very obvious and anyone, you could take, in fact, I probably will, take this documentation to any accounting department at any university and say, what do you think about this? What kind of, what kind of accounting is this? And, and you will see that it, it, this is not right. There is something wrong here. And I'll tell you what's wrong is they don't want any transparency. They just don't want any transparency and they are gonna fight and they're gonna cause us problems and they're gonna say the, the, the auditor can't come. We're done. We're not gonna give you any more information. Um, I think as, as part of the motion, I, I was amused by this letter that they sent today. But there is a last, a last, uh, uh, sentence here. It says, "In addition, it should in a future meeting, agendize the approval of measures proposed by the stadium manager to enhance transparency and visibility into stadium operations like the new accounting system." like the new accounting system and the expenses necessary to implement and operate them." So I think that we should invite them to come and show, and tell us about their, how they're going to enhance transparency and visibility into stadium operations like the new accounting system and expenses necessary. So I guess they're gonna charge us for uh, for them doing their own job. But um, I, 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 you know, I, I don't know. I, I'm, I do feel um, very positive that at the end of the day, we'll be in a, a court of law. I mean, I think that's, that's where we need to be. But in the meantime, it's our responsibility to do what we can to try to get the Stadium Authority um, uh, as a Stadium Authority Board to get the manager to be transparent with us. Because when you look at all these expenses, these potential sales dealings, um, you talked about the, uh, Michael Mina Restaurant. Yes, it's heard out there that they own part of that. So dealing with themselves on the Foster Farm Bowl, um, which is now the Red Box Bowl, uh, there's all kinds of stuff going on. But, but there is one thing that's very clear. That stadium makes money, but the money is staying with, with the ownership of the Forty Niners and not with the Stadium Authority or the City of Santa Clara. And we need to get to the bottom of that. On behalf of our residents, we have to get to the bottom of it. So I want to thank you, Tim. I'm gonna support um, Teresa's motion. And um, ask her if she'll include inviting the Forty Niners to do what they say they're gonna do and show us how they're gonna enhance transparency and visibility. If you would include that, Teresa's part of your motion.
Certainly.
I would like to see that because I, I can't wait to, to hear that. And um, and Tim, again, thank you very much. And I would take this letter um, and um, pretty much file it somewhere because uh, attacking you, I guess they're gonna just continue to personally attack everyone that comes that questions them. So I would take it with a grain of salt. I think you're very professional, the way you have approached this and I look forward to working with you um, in the future to get the facts. And, and these are all facts that, that are undisputed. But I think that um, uh, I want to thank Authority Member O'Neill and Authority Member Davis because I was with you in the trenches trying to get all this information for so many years. You know, I, I remember. And I'm just gonna, I'm gonna correct you, Authority Member O'Neill. You talked about asking for something and, and Scott Sabatino. I'm just gonna correct you because it was the night that uh, they asked for a $5 million reduction in their rent. And our city manager at the time was ready to do it, Julio Fuentes, and we stopped him. And they asked for a $5 million reduction and they had their attorney come up. Um, what was his name with the?
Harry O'Brien.
O'Brien. And he just, he ri- he uh, ripped into us. And then Scott Sabatino's got up and said he was gonna save us from ourselves. Uh, that we should lower the rent for him. Well, lo and behold, again, we went through a um, uh, you know, uh, an authority. And um, the rent was increased and not reduced. So I really want to personally thank you for fighting with me on behalf of, of the residents and Stadium Authority uh, to not give in to that because there was a lot of pressure for us to do that, but we, we, we uh, we hung tough and, and Councilmember Watanabe too. You joined us at the time, which allowed us to do this. And uh, and we had the rent increase so that we will be able to pay off the stadium sooner, sooner than not. So I think that um, for Councilmember Chahal and some of the new council members that are coming in, I would recommend that they go back, look, look at the records, uh, review these contracts. And let me tell you, they're not easy contracts. There's tons of them and they're very complicated and they're all interconnected. And it did take us a long time to, to figure them out. Um, but spend the time, spend the time going through them and seeing what everyone's responsibilities are. And I think you'll have a new outlook on the Stadium Authority when you see um, how the city has done, we've done our, and the Stadium Authority, we've done our due diligence. Um, and they haven't kept up their, their side of the bargain. So I'm sorry I've talked a long time. I just think that uh, that this is important, you know, that we move ahead. We're getting close to getting more facts, but the more facts that come out, the more disturbing it is.
Chair, can I just interject? Um, I have an open invitation to any of the ca- any of the current board members as well as the entering board members for me to go over all the contracts with them and explain to them how, how, how they work.
I would take you up on that um, because of, of the complexity of, of what, you know, uh, uh, because as a Stadium Authority Member, you're responsible for these. So you should understand them. So, all right, um, let's see, is there anybody else before we take the motion?
Oh, Mayor, up to um, uh, the amendment. There was a amendment made to the motion. So I was the second, so I, I will um.
Amendment accepted, Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Okay. Motion and a second to invite the Forty Niners to come and uh, Manco to come and give us their uh, transparency ideas. Okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I uh, read the motion as I have heard it uh, to the maker of the motion?
Yes, please, please.
Authorize the Stadium Authority Executive Director to amend the agreement with JS held and incorporate the recommendations as presented in their presentation to continue their analytical compliance review of the financial records from the non NFL events at Levi's Stadium, including fiscal, fiscal year 2016 and also to review, review the years subsequent to 2017 and agendize and invite Manco to share how they will enhance transparency and visibility into stadium operations like the new accounting system. Perfect.
Is that, is that clear, Executive Director? That, does that give the scope that we want to get that Tim had recommended?
Yes, and as, as, as I'm understanding this, it's, let's just get to work. Let's get the scope going. Let's get the amendment going. Um, execution of the amendment is included. And um, and then we'll just come, continue to come back either through uh, the board or the ad hoc Stadium Authority Committee for updates as Tim continues with his work. Is that correct? Is that, is that how I should be understanding it?
That sounds correct to me. Is, Tim, does that sound good? Do you understand that?
Uh, I do. Yes, that, that works.
All right, let me ask if there's any member of the public or any member from Manco here that would like to speak. Manco, or anyone like to speak? Okay, um, seeing none, uh, Assistant uh, Stadium Authority Clerk.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Board Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Board Member Davis?
For my last motion, yes.
Board Member Watanabe?
Yes.
Board Member Chahal?
Yes.
Chair Gilmore?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone. I know that was uh, almost five hours, pretty much. So appreciate that. All right, uh, next we have uh, reports of members and special committees. Do we have any members that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Uh, City Manager, Stadium Authority Executive Director Report?
I just, I have um, no topics other than a big thank you to Tim Callahan, Lynn Lamb, Ken Lee, Rachel Coles, Christine Jung and, and Ruth Chikata for providing a great deal of assistance for uh, getting this uh, report to the board. Thank you, Tim, and thank you, everyone.
I want to echo that as well because this was a tremendous amount of work, a tremendous amount of information. Um, it's gonna be a great reference document as well. Um, but we do appreciate it. We know it's not easy and um, and I, I'm speaking on behalf of the board. We appreciate all your work and your professionalism. Thank you so much. Okay, uh, that leaves us to our adjournment. And I do have one adjournment.
I'd like to ask that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Arlene Norsworthy. A lifelong Bay Area resident, business owner and volunteer at O'Connor Hospital. Arlene Norsworthy was born on March 27th, 1923, a third generation Italian born and raised in the Bay Area. She was the fifth of nine siblings. Her compassion, exuberance and quirky sense of humor made her an instant friend to everyone that was blessed with her presence and she was a pillar in her community. Having lived through the Great Depression, she learned at an early age to be humble, thankful and kind to strangers and loved ones alike. These virtues influenced every action throughout her life. Arlene was a driven career woman with an unwavering work ethic. After graduating from cosmetology school in 1940, she began a successful career as a hairstylist, which lasted nearly 70 years. She even ran her own salon in San Jose. In the early 1970s, she went back to college and earned her AS degree in culinary arts. This allowed her to pursue a second career in food catering, a career that lasted well into her 80s while still working as a hairstylist. Arlene embraced her Italian Catholic heritage by being a member of the Italian Catholic Federation. She was a member of the Mountain View Historical Association and History San Jose because she believed in the preservation and promotion of her hometown's history. Since her late husband was in the Navy during World War II, she was a member of the Gold Star Wives of America, an organization of wives of World War II veterans. Arlene was no stranger to life's hardships, but the struggles she faced made her stronger and thankful for each day. Despite life's challenges, she made the best of every situation, maintained an effectuously positive attitude and developed countless friendships. Arlene was an extremely caring person who sought out opportunities to help others. She volunteered at local soup kitchens, food banks and convalescent homes and put in countless fundraising hours for local charities. For over 45 years, she volunteered at O'Connor Hospital primarily, primarily in the emergency room and the information desk, and she trained new volunteers. She was an advisory member of Skills Plus, a program that helps stroke victims. One of her proudest moments was when she was nominated to work on the Santa Clara Grand Jury, County Grand Jury. While Arlene, Arlene had many passions and visited many destinations, her favorite place on earth was her garden. Its fragrant flowers, fruitful trees and bountiful plants were her source of peace, comfort and happiness. And she passed away peacefully in her sleep on November 20th, 2020 at the age of 97. She is predeceased by her husband Jacob Lamar and is survived by her children Jacob Junior, uh, Rebecca, I know her as Becky, uh, with husband Jim, Linda, husband Dan and Shella. She's also survived by eight grandchildren and three great grandchildren. She was one of the finest people you could ever meet and she lived in South of Forest in Santa Clara. Um, just a wonderful, wonderful person. So could I please have a motion to adjourn in her memory?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Assistant uh, Stadium Authority Clerk?
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Board Member Davis?
Yes.
Board Member Watanabe?
Yes.
Board Member Chahal?
Yes.
And Chair Gilmore?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
Motion passes and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.